Every organization has its own unique set of priorities.
And that one we needed to figure out. There was a link. And what could be done? And I realized there was a link support.
I told them when they're down to it.
Was the fear of the experience. And I'm thinking, can you fear of something you don't know? That makes no sense. This is right for that.
I don't want to be.
I'm not as good as you.
That's true. Very good.
Okay, your mic's over. Imagine it's a trauma bag.
It's green. Don't turn on. I can't see.
Cut that side down.
Isn't it 8A? Marion, you live on 8A, don't you?
Yes, 8A Avenue.
8A, and that would be 6th. Yeah, that would be 6th.
Yep. 8A Avenue.
Kate, I guess we got a...
We're getting started here. I had Lynn and Sebier coming on. Good news.
Now, this one, he does actually choose two.
Those might take another question. I mean, do you see?
No, they're on each.
Okay, well, we'll call the meeting to order tonight for CCW. Just like to welcome everyone here. Ms. Atkins, Randy, Channel 32, Temple City Star. And all the councilors like to excuse Councilor Court. He's unavailable for the meeting tonight there. We'll start with the opening prayer. We'll ask Councilor Delman to get that person.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you this afternoon in our committee of the whole meeting and pray for thy Spirit to be with us. May we be unified in our decisions. May we have lively discussion to discuss matters pertaining to the town and our responsibilities related thereto. We're grateful for this opportunity. May thy Spirit be with us during our meeting as our prayer. Your name is Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Counselor. We have... It's gonna be probably a fairly lengthy meeting, so we have dinner coming around 6:00, something like that. So we'll go with that. We'll go to item number three, which is the additions and adoptions of the agenda there. We have one addition, which is under 8A, which will be disaster funding for that. Is there any other additions or... Kate, if not, well...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think it appropriate that we let everyone know who might be watching that by resolution in our organizational meeting in October of last year, you, the esteemed Councilor Smith, are the Deputy Mayor for the remaining six months of this term.
He said, "Well, now my head's gonna swell." Now, geez, thanks for the honor.
So, welcome to the chair. And we look forward to an exciting six months with you as Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that, Detective. Okay? For the options.
I'll make your motion for your adoption of your agenda.
Okay. Any questions on that? All in favor? Okay, we have adoption of the minutes for April 2nd, 2013.
As of late.
Okay, Councilor Delman, so we accept the adopted minutes of April 12th, or April 2nd, all in favor? We have three delegations to speak to us tonight there. We have Gordon Atkins, Dave Bergstrom, and Kim Flickinger. Gordon Atkins is... He's come to visit us. He's one of the developers. He bought up a piece of land and he needs to... He would like to speak to us regarding certain parts of his development and maybe some policy change for council as well there. So, Gordon, how much... We can probably give you... We got a delegation coming at 4:30. So we can give you maybe 15 minutes or 20 minutes, and then five minutes for questions. Is that okay with you? Okay, we'll ask you to adjust for it.
Here's the mic up here or back here? It's that big one right there. Mr. Mayors. Marion, and Council, nice to see you again. I'm sure that many of you have been wondering whether we're ever going to break ground down there. And I being at the lead of that pack, it would appear that we're finally through most of the conditions imposed by Old Man River. And we've put together pricing and some options in terms of some things we're doing. The one ongoing problem that we're going to have is one that you had before, and that is in the maintenance and administration of the creek bed itself. There's been two events that you're aware of. But through a little bit of poor management on the Gulf Coast side, took away a lot of material. And so we're trying to work through the system in both protecting those special little fish down there and also mitigating and bringing that back to a armor condition. Having said that, as you well know, there doesn't seem to be any funds from anyone else. It's just good luck, and we'll try to hold you up as much as we can at the government level. But we are meeting with... We've had meetings with DFO and Environment and SRB and come to some conclusions. We're just trying to bring those up to speed. And we found now that the DFO offices have all been closed. The Fisheries and the Special... The Species at Risk Program, one has been moved to Edmonton, the other one to Winnipeg. And it'll only get more difficult. So I'll just leave that for what it is, because I'm here to plead to other issues. And the two issues that I would like to chat with you about, one of them has to do with the electrical component of the subdivision. And there were some handouts late in the game. I had a death in the family, so I didn't get them to Marion as quickly as I should have. But let me just briefly tell you what my thoughts are with respect to the electrical. I'm sure that you've gone through enough of your own discussions with the potential purchase of your system by Forest, that you're well aware of the system and what impact it has on the town. Having said that, it's an unusual situation, and particularly an unusual situation for developer. Because the infrastructure of this type is not normally owned by, unless the entity is, in fact, the entity like Forest or Inmax. So in the city of Calgary, for example, when a developer comes to the point where the subdivision's been approved and he starts putting in the infrastructure, firstly, you all understand that there's a four-party arrangement in terms of the shallow infrastructure. So we've got electrical, we've got TELUS, we've got Shaw, and we've got ATCO. Typically, the lead contractor on those underground services is the electrical portion of the four-party group. And typically, again, because you're creating infrastructure that is creating income for basically monopolies, in this case, all four of them are monopolies of one sort or another, you're creating that infrastructure. And in doing so, you're providing them with a clientele that allows them to build them for the rest of their lives. Now, in the town of Cardston, the developer input has been slight. You've had individual small developments, and you've had a couple of larger developments. Other than that, it's been mainly individual homeowners adding to the asset of your infrastructure. As I noted in my verbal presentation, let me ask you to remove yourself for a moment from your responsibilities as town councilors, where you're trying to protect the homeowner, the tax base, and also to preserve and to create an asset through your electrical system. And let me now ask you to think of yourself as a developer. And all of a sudden, as a developer, you're asked to pay for the infrastructure that's going in the ground for TELUS, or pay for the infrastructure that's going in the ground for Shaw, for ATCO. And that's what's being asked here. Because you don't have... You're a small unit. You don't have a system of recovery or cost recovery. You don't have a system of subsidization. In this particular case, my engineers, and I don't know if they were trying to be predictive here, but they approached Kana in Lethbridge and also Forest, who thought they were going to be the owners of the asset. And so there's two aspects of this that are troubling for developer and reludes them from the competitiveness of development. And one of those is that in order to price the electrical requirements for the subdivision, you need to have an engineering layout. And unless you have an engineer on staff that does the engineering for the sizing of all of the subdivision requirements, the other option is for your engineer to go to contractors, who typically put in the infrastructure. And again, as I said, it's really important in this particular contractor, because the contractor's the lead contractor. They do all the work. And the other three, that is ATCO, Shaw, and TELUS, provide the lead contractor with the materials to put into the shallow excavations for their services. And they also pay their portion of that excavation. And so the lead contractor, being the power electrical component, does all that work and does it on behalf of the other three entities and collects the funds from that. Now, again, typically, in this particular case, and there is a brief breakdown on this. A year ago, Kana did the cost takeoff, put in the streetlights, put in the number of transformers and the length of runs for the electrical system, came up with a dollar number. And that dollar number is before you there. I don't have it memorized. But in any case, the dollar number is typically subsidized by the electrical entity, in this case, Forest. And the subsidization is greater in Calgary under Inmax than it is with Forest. But you'll also note that one of the ways that Forest were subsidizing, about $43,000 on this particular contract, would be that they would give back about $1,400 per homeowner hookup at the time of hookup. Now, the one benefit of that, if it were a town system like this one, that is that that doesn't mean the town is front-ending the electrical hookup and waiting for people to become a consumer. In effect, Forest is paying back to the developer $1,400 plus or minus as each of the homeowners hook into the system. And that's the only subsidies that they're involved with. Now, having said all of that, as I said, I'm offended... And it doesn't do me any good to be offended, but I am offended by the idea that I am paying for the infrastructure of any monopoly or business like TELUS or Shaw or ATCO. These are people delivering services and just as the town is delivering services. Having said that, on the one hand, the subdivision requires one thing that would not normally be required, that is street lighting. In other words, if there were no subdivision, there'd be no need for street lighting. So it's an area that doesn't normally require or get any form of subsidization. Now, one last factor that I'd like to mention with respect to the town of Cardston, two things, actually. One is that, again, typically in a larger municipality, every piece of work that is done by a developer is paid for by the developer to the city, or the infrastructure is created and then it's turned over to the city. And believe me, a lot of people believe that in the case of city of Calgary, for example, the taxes go to provide roads, provide recreation facilities, provide upgrades on sewer and water and all that sort of thing. It doesn't. The developer pays for all of that, pays it up front. In this particular case, in Calgary, again, they do have a cost recovery system. And because it's also applying to the next item I'm going to speak to you, I'll just take one minute. And that is the cost recovery. If we create a subdivision, and in that subdivision there's a mile of road created, for example, and along that road, the infrastructure is put into place, so we've got sewer and water and the shallow services, the road is put in there. And it is extended from a planning perspective so it meets or integrates itself with future plans for subdivision. In other words, there's another mile going to be added on to that. In that particular circumstance, there's a formula that the larger municipalities come forward with that requires the second developer to pay their share by a formula basis of extending the water, of extending the sewer, of having the road in place. And when that developer puts that second development in, the town or municipality simply says, "Here's the formula. This is how much you owe the previous developer. And before we'll issue your development permit, you send him a check." And that offsets the costs that he has put up in either oversizing or extending certain services. In this case, again, I do understand the fact that the town is accumulating an asset. And that asset is, in some ways, is being given free. And on the other case, you're well aware that that asset has a lot of expenses involved with it. You're just currently doing some upgrades that remind you of that every day that you drive around the community. The one further thing that, in some ways, we object to, and on the other hand, we certainly recognize the municipality's right to require a certain specification. And I'm saying outside of the Canadian specifications now for lighting or anything else, but a specification, for example, on the type of transformer that would be used. In other words, as a new developer in 32 lots down in there, and I come in and say, "Okay, guys, I'd really like to put my transformers underground. I don't want them up above ground for those half a million dollar homes and have to look at the transformer all the time. So I want them underground." You have to make the first big decision. "Okay, well, will we let him do that?" And secondly, "What happens when one of those goes out?" Then you don't have one in your supply, and it's going to be hard to get one, because very few other people do. So it's recognized that the town would have a specification requirement. But it may be even more important for the transformer to be of a type that is interchangeable with other parts of the community. So in fact, when one goes down, you don't have to wait three weeks or six weeks or pay triple the price to get one of those transformers in. So one of the things I was suggesting, because I know that it's not part of your system and hasn't been part of your practice, I, as I said, I find it... I have to be upfront. I find it offensive that I'm paying for the infrastructure so that you or someone else can charge those people forever. I had that debate once with TELUS, and we went right to the wall. And I finally said, "Okay, I'll pay. I'll put in the system. You give me a third of all of the income you have over the next 32 years." I didn't ever hear back from her. And in this particular case, though, one thing I would suggest to you that may be a possible way to give us some assistance in terms of this development without it being a long-term burden to the taxpayer, would in fact to be provided. In this case, typically, again, we might come to the town, "Who is the owner of this system?" And say, "Okay, we want you to put... You be the lead, and you put in the system. And if there's costs that you have as a formula, then we'll pay for that. And then you gather the funds from the other three entities. But as you know, you're already burdened. You've got a small staff, and you're burdened in trying to upgrade and maintain the system you have." In my conversations with administration, they really didn't think that they were interested in tendering this and tying up your people to do this project. So there's a couple of things that could be possible, obviously. Either the provision of materials, equipment, or... And more specifically, maybe in this particular case, would be something like the transformers to actually be provided as a form of subsidy on the electrical.
So, just in the interest of time here, so basically, you're looking for council to create policy for like an electrical investment strategy? Is that kind of what you're looking for then?
David, I'm sorry. I've got a real hearing problem, so...
Oh, sorry. I said, basically, you would like council to look at creating policy for the electrical... For an electrical investment strategy? Is that kind of what you're looking for?
I think it would be wise, but I'm thinking that from my perspective. You know, I'm telling you the whole story. But I'm thinking that in order for you to provide any form of subsidy or any sort of help to developers, to encourage them to come in, then you probably do need to look at an investment strategy so that you truly are investing in your own resource, in this case, the utility company.
Okay. Well, that's something I think that the council would look at, yeah.
I won't.
Did you want to... Do you want to give questions now or right at the very end for...
Oh, are you done with your presentation?
I've got one more item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm trying to be faster on this one without all of the dialogue. With respect to the water supply to the subdivision, I want to point out, first of all, as you're well aware, the subdivision is a closed entity. In other words, it's not a connective subdivision. What I'm trying to say is that there's not going to be another subdivision on either side of it. So here we are down in this particular situation. When we started this and discussing and negotiating with your administration, there was a offer and decision to provide the water and sewer to the property line, the property line definition being the east bank of the Lee's Creek, so that I would do the horizontal drilling underneath it and connect to the subdivision. And from my perspective, that was the requirement. But as we got into this further and the engineers have analyzed fire flows and the absorption rate, because on a subdivision like this, it could be fast or it could take a long time. And if the absorption rate is slow, then there's a question of whether or not the water that is in the pipes is being used adequately to keep it fresh. And so you have two choices, either looping it or alternately flushing it. And I thought that we would be flushing it. Your own requirements, I think, and your own engineering requirements have a requirement for fire flow, which we can meet. And the requirement for number of units. In a city like Calgary, for example, they use a number of 40 residential units before it is mandatory to have looping. Your requirement, I believe, is 21. Our subdivision is 32. We don't feel that it's necessary. We don't feel that it's appropriate to add the two loops at the same time. In addition to that, I will make this suggestion to you, and that is that, just to give you the three options, the options were to come 7th Street down through the golf course and connect at the bottom. And with that particular option, we can provide both water and sewer. That way, we don't have to cross the creek. The other option is the one that was originally offered, which is from 3rd up 9th to the creek, under the creek, and into the system. The third option was to come from 8th Avenue and 8th Street, sort of down the hill. And we didn't think that was a particularly good option. It was more expensive and a lot of other things that didn't do anything, other than perhaps disturb that already sensitive ground on the hillside. So we went back to the two options, either the one from the east or the one from the west. I didn't feel that both of them are necessary. There's obviously a cost differential and a requirement differential. If we only had a single supply, and that supply came through the golf course, there's a cost of roughly $77,000 if it is horizontally drilled in a golf course. There's probably a $20,000 saving there if it was an open cut for a portion of the golf course. And that would give us the hookup both for sewer and water in terms of the trenching and the lines. Coming from the other direction, it's about $115,000 cost. Up from 8th and 8th, it was about $134,000 cost. The other thing I will suggest to you, and that is that at this time, it doesn't seem appropriate or necessary to have the looping. With an 8-inch water main, we can get by with a 6-inch main, which tied into the 7th and 6th as well. But for fire flows, an 8-inch line would be required down there without looping. So we would put in an 8-inch line and a flushing station at the east end, close to the bridge. And that flushing station could be done, again, up to the point where your engineers or your people determined that the absorption rate was adequate, so you didn't need that any further. If we were to do those things, obviously, there's less cost to both of us. In addition to that, it seems to me that the water sewer coming from 3rd up 9th would better... Would be a more timely thing to happen if and when the dairy land, which, as you know, I own, was developed. I'm not going to be around for that development, because the absorption rate isn't great enough. But having said that, it seems to me that that makes more sense. And at that point in time, then the two systems could be interconnected if necessary. But our own experience would suggest that that's not the case. Anyway, that's enough of the verbiage. We'll have to ask questions.
I have a question for you, Gordon. And this is follows. When we came to council in 2009, the property was already acquired. At that time, Forest was not even in the horizon. We had no discussion for Forest. That only came about a year and a half ago. So when you purchased a property and made all the arrangements with administration, at that time, what was your understanding of electrical cost of hookup to you? What was the understanding you had? Because all of a sudden, you're presenting the picture after Forest, but Forest was not in the horizon at that point.
Again, frankly, Marion and I did not discuss that matter. I knew that the town had their own electrical system because of my property down at the dairy. But having said that, all of the municipalities that I have dealt with have a... I can't call it anything else. It's a subsidy in place to offset the costs of the electrical system. So I just thought that that would be in place. And then as the discussions with Forest came about, then I thought it was more likely to be the case. And then we actually confronted the issue, and I think Marion and I had that discussion. It's just, no, we're a small unit. We don't have the ability to do that. And it's not our intention to do that. So that's pretty clear.
Okay, so that's what happened.
Right.
So you based your assumption on the fact that we might have sold our electrical system?
No, no. I was still thinking that there would be a subsidy involved as in every other case. But after the Forest discussion and so on, then we had a more firm discussion with Marion, and she said, "No, we're not selling to Forest. And no, we don't normally do that. We haven't done it with anyone else."
Yes, that's about the same. There is no precedent.
But that's right. And before that time, I just made that assumption. It wasn't an agreement. It was just an assumption.
I mean, it's not that what you're proposing has merit. It has merit, but you compare us to Calgary and Calgary, and that's a different kind of story, right?
That's not fair. The only fair comparison, Counselor, would be the one that I made earlier. And that is that no matter how you look at it, the electrical system in the town of Cardston is an acquired asset. And that acquired asset is there both with expenses and return. And it's up to the town and the council, obviously, to determine what that profit ability is and whether you're passing on all the profitability to your taxpayer or whether you're making a profit on the system. Inmax has gone so far the other way that they might as well be CPR. You know, they're a country in themselves. So we really get soaked by Inmax, even though it is an offshoot of city of Calgary. But what, as I said, it's offensive to me a little bit to take a monopoly like that, because that is what it is. It's a monopoly. There's no other choices in town. I've already asked that question. Can I put in my own electrical system? And the answer was, "Not sure the province or the feds would let you do that." But otherwise, you can approach it from that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to have some clarification on that aspect. Thank you.
Kate, we probably have time for maybe one more question here.
Let's ask a question. Talking about the water and the sewer hookups, I just want to understand... I can understand the water hookup can come from any direction. Water is under pressure. Sewer has to run downhill. And so...
Okay. Good question. And I can answer it quickly. We have a proposal that we discussed right from day one that we have used before. And what it is, is a low-pressure sewage system. Now, the reason for that is multiple. Number one, by taking that floodplain area down there and using a gravity system and digging to the gravity for a gravity system and both matching it to the town system without lift stations...
And so...
Good question. And I can answer it quickly. We have a proposal that we discussed right from day one that we have used before. And what it is, is a low-pressure sewage system. Now, the reason for that is multiple. Number one, by taking that floodplain area down there and using a gravity system and digging to the gravity for a gravity system and both matching it to the town system without lift stations, first of all, you're creating a lot more excavation. With a low-pressure system, the system is a proven system. It's been worldwide. We've used it for 20 years. And basically, it's nothing more than an individual pump. Each home will have an individual pump, an E1 pump, so that everything that goes into that pump is ground to the finest particles it can be. It stores it, takes it up to a certain point, and discharges it into a smaller line. That smaller line is buried very shallow, and so it can go over the contours. You don't have to do all this deep ditch digging for a gravity line. And it is capable to go up that hill.
Okay.
So that solves that.
So you have a pressure system?
Right, yeah. And it doesn't mean a lift station on part of the town, which would be a no-no for both of us.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Mr. Atkins, we really appreciate you coming in and presenting to us. I'm sure the council's going to have further discussion on the comments and issues that you brought.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We will see you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here, second delegation is with the Parks and Rec. We have Dave Pilling. I guess he'll be here to give us an introduction. Council's recommending that Acapulco Pools be our pool construction and overseer of our new facility that we're going to be receiving or upgraded facility. So maybe we could have... And we'll give you as much time as you need there. Dave Bergstrom, who is from Acapulco Pool. He flew in from Toronto. So we'll give him as much time as he needs here for his presentation as well. So we'll let Dave Pilling come up, do a quick introduction.
And Bernie is the president of the company.
Okay, sorry. All right, Bernie.
Paul.
Paul, okay. We'd like to welcome you as well, Bernie, as well. So we'll start with Dave. You can give a quick introduction and introduce your guest.
Perfect. Thank you for having us for years long. I've never been able to...
He's a preacher.
Okay. So we like you guys having the background there. We're excited to recommend Acapulco Pools to be our construction, project, design, build, everything manager for the new pool. And so that's what we're going to go over a little bit today. I know Jeff gave you a background that had some of the criteria that we used in order to kind of go through the process that we used to decide on which one of the bids would be a recommendation based to go forward. So I'm going to go through that briefly, hit on some of those main points. And then we'll have some time after if you guys have any questions for us. So based on the criteria that we had, there was, as we've mentioned in the background, there were really six different specific criteria that we went through in really no particular order, but I'll just go through those for you. The first one is the type of pool. So in our three different proposals that we had, there was three different types of pool systems that we considered. What we decided upon was a concrete pool, which had been ported to us by Acapulco Pool Systems. What... a reasoning behind that was basically from talking to different pool professionals that we had contact with, along with different references that we had contacted from each company. And from there, we decided that, based on those answers that we received, that concrete would be the most economical, long-lasting pool that we could have that type of... excuse me, that type of pool system as well. Acapulco Pools also had the longest warranty of any of the pool companies who bid for us. They had five-year-longer warranty than either of the other companies that we've dealt with. So we thought that was a major factor. Next one that we touched on was price. For the three main bids that we received, Acapulco was actually right in the middle of the pack. They went up the lowest bid. That being said, there are a lot of adjustments that can be made in terms of water features, square footage, different aspects of the pool that can be changed to bring the price, if it may be to be changed. So although they were the lowest bid, we felt like we had enough room within the design process to adjust that if necessary. The references, this was probably, in terms of these criteria, the one that maybe stood out the most to me as I went through and polled numerous different references for all the pool companies. The references that we received for Acapulco were almost impeccable, which was maybe I'm too pessimistic, but surprising to me on any construction project. Literally, every reference that I talked to said they were on time, they were on budget, and we would use them again, which was very encouraging to us in our discussions as we went through the review process to say, you know what? Which company is going to give us the least amount of trouble, if you will? Which one is going to get us finished on time within our budget and have a nice end product? The feature of the pool, again, Acapulco, in their proposal, had the most water features, spray features in the pool, and the most flexibility. Each one of their water features can be changed out with a new feature in the future, as well as they added a few extra in there that we could add additional water features in the future. Organization, again, this was another big one for us. In their proposal, in their initial proposal, the first meeting we had, they had outlined the entire timeline for the build of the pool, which was considerably shorter than the other two bids as well, but measured straight down to, you know, the month, the day of the week in terms of the different phases of the project and when that would be completed. Again, in speaking to the references, a few of them specifically mentioned that those timelines for their projects were followed down to the date. And so very encouraging on that note as well. Materials and the equipment in terms of mechanical room specifically, pumps and motors that run the actual pool themselves. Their... the equipment that they had listed was superior to other... to the other pool companies that had given us quotes as well. Things like turnover time, which is how fast you get all the water in the pool out and all brand-new water into the pool each day as it cycles through, was shorter than the other competitors, which is important from a health code aspect for us, as well as the filtering systems were superior and important, again, for the cleanliness of the pool and making sure that it's safe for our patrons. So those are the criteria that we went through. One thing that was kind of going to start to the actual bids we received is that we asked for the waterslide feature to be priced separately. And that was the purpose of just giving us an idea of how big of a piece of this puzzle that would be. So what we've kind of determined is that at this point, we would like to leave that out of this phase of the project and try and get the maximum square footage we can for our budget. That being said, the waterslide feature, depending on the slide we go with, will cost us anywhere from $175,000 to $225,000. We felt that would be a great... very... something very specific that we could gain some fundraising support from the community. So we feel like that would be a good project for us to say, we're going to build a pool, find some means of really getting the community excited and involved in terms of raising that money specifically for the slide itself. And we feel like that's a contribution. The question, I guess the one question we had for the council was in terms of public consultation. I know I understood from Jeff and Randy that there had been a lot of that in the past, and we've used a lot of that up to this point. What we want to know is that now, this part of the process that we're in is with the council like us to seek further public consultation. Do we go ahead with what we have received thus far? Go into this design process? Do we use what we've received so far and have, you know, when we get to the final design, have an open house to present it and show it? Just some direction on that, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
As we go forward.
Sure. I'd like to answer Mr. Pilling's question about what we use as a process from here. I think we're at the point where we're... everything is very highly technical. And I think we involve ourselves with engineers and consultants, which we've done. I don't see the need at this juncture to go to any further public consultation because, again, we're talking about things that are very technical, structural, operational nature. But I do like the idea of having a public open house with all of the beautiful renderings to get people excited and to let them know what we're doing. I have a question, however. You referred to a five-year-longer guarantee. And I was looking for reference to that here, and I maybe just missed it. One of the questions I always ask with anyone offering a guarantee, how long has Acapulco Pool been in business?
Have they been in business? Yeah, I'll maybe let them handle that part, but longer than I've been alive.
Councillor Troy?
I would follow up... to follow up on what Mayor Scott just said. I also believe that we already had a fair amount of open house regarding all the design, et cetera. What I really feel we need to make sure that we do at this point without having further public consultation, but have an open house, is to take in consideration what we heard at those public consultation meetings. For example, the swim club really was looking for six lanes rather than five. That was a specification for them to be able to hold swim meets. The other one was the handicap society, who asked us to be mindful of having a gradual entry or a lift of some sorts. And the other one was the lifeguards, who were concerned about the palm trees being visibilities in order to have a full sight of the pool without having to add more lifeguard to different sides of the pool. So I think if those three groups, which were the most important group, were consulted once the design is pretty well in its final stage before we have that presentation and open house, I think that would be a wise move.
Thank you.
If I could...
Sir, councillor Dolly?
Under item 24, you talk about oversized equipment. What's... and you say to provide superior water quality, et cetera. Is that necessary?
Perhaps we should just let Acapulco make their presentation and me answer some of those questions.
And then in item 26, you say a size of about 6,500 square feet with a bader load of about 401 people. And that's not 13% of our town population. That seems excessive.
I guess I'll speak to them for a second. Councillor? Yeah. I guess all I can speak to that, councillor Dolly, is it's not much greater than our current bader load. And given the demographic of the community, we don't feel that that's over the top at all. If we look at like a Ramens, it's upwards of 750. So we're scaled down from that. And our current bader load's about 350, 300. It's not a great increase over our current bader load.
Mayor Scott, last question.
Well, I was going to make a comment about the pool mechanical. But since I don't know the first thing about pool mechanical, I'll wait until the experts talk to that. I do, however, want to add some comments from Parks and Recreation Board meeting a couple of months ago. I think it was Randy. It was expressed at that Parks and Recreation Committee meeting that we do want some features. And so I think that we'll be able to hear what's proposed. And it's nice to see that we don't necessarily insist on the full meal deal at this point, but we do want some features. And so it's interesting to look at the budget breakout as you see here with the various things. And I'm interested to see what the response is. For the palm trees, I think we're pretty clear of the fact that palm trees are going to be placed in a way that would not obliterate the guards from who they are looking out for and guarding in the pool. But anyway, yeah, I think I'm ready to hear the presentation. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, are you finished?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Dave.
And introduce your next guest.
So as I mentioned before, we have David Burne from Acapulco. And they're going to kind of go through that executive summary that they gave too, and then give you a more specific idea of the pool construction.
Now, good afternoon, and thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, councillors. We had prepared a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, that we're, you know, prepared to run through quickly, or we can simply speak through some of the things we've heard and respond to some of the things that we've talked of thus far or heard talked about thus far.
Just give us two minutes, and we can have the projector set up.
Yeah, on the wall back there.
We've actually brought one with us.
Oh.
I'm not saying... But we did bring one. And so we're going to go quickly. What's that? Do you have a little table?
We have a big area.
Yeah, councillor, we made us need to move your councillor courts chair for the presentation. I'm just going to steal your power.
Here's power.
Oh, there's power there?
We got it.
I know. Somebody's got to teach David how to wrap an extension.
Properly, yes. Yeah, that... Well, thank you. Set this off to the side a little bit. You didn't know why?
Now, we'll get it off to the side here, Corey.
Oh, is he okay, Dave? Hmm? Yeah, no, I'm just fine, yeah.
All right.
Can we get you a couple of chairs for you?
No, I'm fine. You know what? If we sit, we might sleep this day of the game.
You know your presentation should be well.
Yeah, I was going to say, if anything sounds completely off-base, it's not a personality trait. It's just we got out of bed at about 1:30 your time this morning, so...
Just as I was going to bed.
Just as... oh. We should be broadcasting.
Yours just attaches like a champ there.
Yeah, no problem, yeah, yeah. Let's see now, slideshow. Okay, is that visible, do you think?
Yes, it's visible.
You got a manual focus on it? Is that what that does, right?
One's the telephoto, one's the focus, yeah. There we go.
Yeah, that's a little better than...
Yeah, we can do it. And maybe we could even kill a couple of lights, guys, if that's okay? And that will help the brightness a little bit.
So Dave, we'll let you run through your entire presentation and...
And we have a time limit, just because...
You guys take as much time as you like.
Okay, we'll try to be brief. We know it's late in the day for you folks as well. But again, I'd just like to thank you very much for allowing us to be here. We're very pleased and proud to be here and excited about this project for Cardston. My name's David Bergstrom. I'm the Business Development Consultant for Acapulco Pools. And Bernie Goll is the president of Acapulco Pools. And this is what we have proposed for the town of Cardston. And we think it's going to be a terrific facility. We will do that, yeah. We will do that, yeah. Very briefly about qualifications and background. And I won't dwell too much on this because, you know, Dave and Jeff have done a great job. I know Dave did most of the... or a lot of the footwork, at least, in going through the process. These are some of the past projects that are similar in nature to what we're proposing for Cardston. for Cardston. Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and again, there's the list. It's reiterated elsewhere, and we're happy to provide it. All of our projects are references. We don't, we don't delineate who we want people to call. We feel it's the nature of our business that we, you know, we can, we can have any of our clients contacted. We're happy for people to speak with. Since 2008, we've completed in the order of four hundred aquatic projects, aquatic facilities, including some of some quite prestigious locations. We've done a lot of pools for Lifetime Fitness throughout North America, right from really Phoenix, Arizona, to the most recent that we've done in Mississauga, Ontario. They've just sort of made the move into Canada. I think that was their first installation. And so we've done, this says two hundred and seventy-six, and, you know, I think that's, being conservative, that's on the large bodies of water. There are smaller bodies of water that it amounts to nearly four hundred over, over the history of our relationship with Lifetime Fitness. Again, related experience, water parks, community pools, leisure pools, beach entry pools, toys. In the bottom right there, you see one that was done in Newport News, Virginia. In fact, all, a lot, all those are from the Doris Miller Aquatic Center in Newport News. Quite a recent project, Kingston Memorial Center in Kingston, Ontario.
Did you get a chance to bid on Provo, Utah project that's just nearing completion?
And we used to do a lot of work in the United States, but when the recession came, it really, like, business dried up, I'd say at least by ninety percent. And it's starting to come back a bit now, but it got, it got to the point where it just didn't make financial sense to work down there. And, but our economy in Canada was exceptional. We used to do eighty-five percent of our work in the U.S. five years ago, now it's the exact opposite.
Yeah, back then, their dollar was very strong.
Right, and that gave us a competitive advantage, of course, as well. Brad, do you want to talk about the history of the company a little bit?
Yeah, we, my, my parents, they, they came over from Germany. I was three months old when we came over. Give you a real cold, snore version of it. And they came over from, from Germany. They, my dad worked on a farm for two years, and back in the sixties, late, late fifties, early sixties, there was a big, big housing boom in Canada. So my dad started out in the concrete business. And that's why we typically build concrete pools today, because that's our real background, is concrete work. So my dad did a lot of concrete work, and we had a local pool builder in Kitchener, where we're from, had my dad build the concrete shelves for him. And that fellow, Lou Bender, was his name, he spent half the year in Florida and the other half in Kitchener. So we built the concrete shelves, and every year, my dad did more and more work on these pools. Eventually, he was doing the interior finishing of the pool, he was doing the plumbing, he was building the entire pool for this Lou Bender fellow. And he was getting up in age, and, you know, he wanted to sell his business. My dad didn't want to buy it, and I was just coming out of school, and my dad said, what, you know, if you go sell the pools, because my dad was more of a hands-on guy, I'll build them, you sell them. And it didn't quite work that way. I ended up selling, and I also had to build them. But that's okay. And so we started building swimming pools, residential pools initially. And that was, that became a very good business for us, and we started doing less and less of the house foundations and commercial work, concrete work. But it became a very seasonal business. You know, you, you had good people, and you were really busy for six months of the year, and then the rest was dead, because you can't build a pool in the, in the summer, I mean, in the winter in Ontario where we live. So we started building hotel pools, motel pool, actually not hotels, really motels back then, and campground pools. So that, because they didn't want us to work on their properties in the summer, they wanted us to work in their September, October, November, and early in the season. That was good, but then again, we still had four months off of the year, and we got into the commercial pools for municipalities. And that's what we specialize in today. We build, like, ninety-eight percent of our work is from municipalities. And we build, we've built from Honolulu to Tucson, Arizona, to Atlanta, Georgia, to New York City.
Newfoundland.
And Newfoundland to Vancouver. So we've worked all, all over North America. Our crews are very mobile, and we're very good at expediting our materials and equipment to locations far from our base in Kitchener. We're very unique. We're, virtually everything goes through our shop before it comes to a job site. We don't, you know, one thing I don't let happen is I don't let our people on this site go and buy specialty materials from the local Home Depot or whatever, because we are really big on quality control. We have long warranties on our pools, so we need to have the quality control. So virtually, everything comes through our shop, gets delivered with our own vehicles and equipment to your location.
I just want to finish a little bit on that, too, that, you know, and, you know, Bernie has developed this business from what his father started over, over these past forty years or so, such that we are, we are now the, the prominent aquatic constructor in, in Canada, and one of the most prominent in North America. It's become quite a successful company, and I think that the reasons are for that is our adherence to quality that Bernie mentioned, and our dedication to schedule and, and meeting the client's needs.
Yeah, a real feather in our capes was when we got the contract six months after nine eleven to do, to build a pool for Pentagon. I mean, there were a lot of U.S. builders, but we, we won that project, and it wasn't because of price. It was because of who we were, what we could provide for them. And it's, it was, that was a very interesting project. I know all about security now.
Over the years, a lot of internal systems have been developed. You know, the, the list is there, and it takes a lot of time to go through all of that. Some of the primary ones that are really important to us and, and, and work so well for us, just very quickly, our gap study process number two on that list, it's a, it's an assessment of, you know, what the project looks like and any sort of obstacles to construction, things that just won't work. For example, an excavation inside of a building, is there adequate clearance? Are the clearances through the doorways going to allow for the future removal of equipment, things like that? The, the next thing, I guess, that would be very important to us is our protract manager, item five, and that's just the way that we organize our deliveries to site. We have this staged delivery system that we use for everywhere that we build in North America. So we use C containers that are, you know, the large metal containers that are filled with the, the products and materials that are going to be needed for that stage of construction. So we have deliveries that are A, B, C, D, and so on, usually not beyond D or E, so that lines up very well with the, the project's schedule. And then, and then the last one that I think is very important is the sixty-day aquatic completion sprint. And that is quite simply working backward from the turnover date to you, the town, to when all things must be done. Now, quite often, we're engaged with a, a, a large group where there's a general contractor, you know, several consultants, many trades and so on. So that becomes very important, that level of coordination. In this particular situation, you know, we're the, we're the project manager, and, which we're good at. We did that, we've done that recently at the town of Alliston. We're building at the town of Stratroy, Carradoc is the general contractor now, and it works well for us, and we have control of it.
I just want to go back to the aquatic gap study for a minute. You know, once we're awarded this contract, we're going to be sitting down with your group, and we're going to, we're going to come up with, we want to look for all the gaps in, in this project, so that, we want to make sure that the town clearly understands what they're responsible for, and we let them know what, what we're responsible for, so that there isn't a surprise at the end where you, someone comes up and says, oh, well, we've got all these pumps, and, but who's going to wire them? Who's the electrician to wire them off? So we make sure all these gaps are covered, and that the town has a clear understanding of what they have to do and what we have to do. And because if there's any issues that have to be resolved, we can resolve, it's easy to resolve a, an issue at the beginning of the project rather than the last minute at the end of the project when you've got kids outside with towels around, under their arms trying to use the pool. Because then you, then you make an emotional decision, and we don't want that. We want to have a, a decision where we can make sure that everything is done, you know, we follow the budget very closely in that. That, I mean, we're, we're sticklers about, in our company, we're sticklers about our budget. We watch our budget every week on every job. We go through where we are in our budget, we forecast to make sure that we're going to be where we, where we want to be at the end of the project. And that's, that's really important. And we also have a process called a no-cost-change-order solution. And, you know, things come up in projects where, a, a good example is, let's say we run into, I'm just trying to think.
Six lane versus five lane?
Well, that's maybe a big one, but let's say, I'm talking about a surprise. Like, let's say bad soil. You know, let's say there's a small, there's an issue with bad soil. There's always a little bit of room in a project, so that if you have something that came up unknown and you have no budget for it, we will work for you to find a savings in this pool to maybe offset that cost. Without, you know, we're not going to make the pool smaller, we're not going to make it shallow or anything like that, but there's always places on every project, once you get into it, where that maybe we can, where we can save some money to help offset additional costs. I do not want to have any surprises for you. I mean, my biggest, I tell you, we've, and we do this often, we've had jobs where we have done exceptionally well, much better than we thought. And this is our best form of advertising, when you finish a project and then you go back to the owner and you say, you know what, you have a X-dollar credit on this project, and you can, you're going to spend it with us, but you have a credit on this project. We just had a, a very difficult renovation we did for the city of.
Kitchener.
Actually, city of Kitchener, where we're from. We say, I mean, the project was done at about a third of the cost.
I quoted the drill.
And, and we were the little bidder. We were the little bidder. But it was, it was done at a third. I mean, our, we found a unique way of resolving the problem, actually a much better way than we initially planned, and the way the engineer had planned, and they got, they got money back. And, you know, we don't, you know, we don't like to hit home runs. We, we like to earn our money, and we want to be fair with people. And you know what? I mean, my goal is the more you give, the more you get back. It works. It's a real simple solution. That's a simple process. It works really well.
We like to build relationships. We think it's important. Just to talk about some of the features that we, we thought of when we were putting together, and this is not your rendering, by the way, it's, it's just a background image that I left in place. So, flow and function, improved use of space, multi-function pool, design based on demographics that we talked to Jeff and Dave about early in the game, superior filtration, and I'm going to comment on Counselor Dolly's question earlier about oversizing equipment, and why, why, why we do that the way we do it, and then a well-considered mechanical design. So again, this is the rendering. You'll notice the, the difference in orientation, and, and I mean, Bernie picked up on this right away. You know, initially, with the shower and facing the building, you know, there's very little space when you came out of the building, and that's a natural place. It's like reaching the top of the escalator at the, at the, at the grocery store, or the airport, or whatever. Everyone stops. Well, that happens in pools, too, where people walk out, and there needs to be space for that, for that bolus of people to sort of spread out. And the other thing is, you know, we've oriented this beach entry toward the building for that very reason, so there's not a danger, and it's not a point of congestion anymore. People can just start filtering into the pool. And that beach entry is sloped at eight percent, one, one inch per foot, which is a code requirement, number one, but also provides a really gentle means of entering the pool for children, elderly people, people with disabilities and so on, or limitations in their mobility. And so that's why that was, that's why that was done that way.
Dave, it was mentioned that the swim club would like six lanes. So I guess my question really is for our rec people, which pools around southern Alberta, outside of the Lethbridge, which pools around southern Alberta are six lanes? Are, is, is five lanes fairly frequent?
Six is common. And if you want to have competition, you want to go six as a minimum. If you're going high-end competition, it's either eight or ten lanes.
Okay.
So six lanes is the minimum, and that, and there's nothing wrong with six. You don't have to go eight. I would not go eight on an outdoor pool. But if you're building this as an indoor pool, I would strongly recommend to go to eight lanes, but you should go six for your swim team, yes.
We're currently six.
Yes, we are.
So we are now.
You're six lanes?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're swimming.
Now, I've got a question about, about concrete. Can you, can you speak to, because of the harsh weather, and of course, obviously, places like Edmonton, Grand Prairie, their winters are harsh, sort of ours are, nonetheless, freezing can't be kind on a concrete pool basis.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk on that one. First of all, the structural design that we use for these pools is constantly improving. The, the quality of the concrete has been, it's just, has been improving from, since I've been involved, there's a lot more additives in concrete now to make it, make it more dense. We use very little water in the concrete now. Instead of using water, we use what they call superplasticizers. And the, you put this, it's, I'm going to give you an analogy, and it's not oil, but it's like putting oil in the concrete, it makes it, it makes it, it makes it flow really well. And that's what we need to, to place the concrete. But it, water is the, you know, here's the most important thing I'm going to say today, and that is, water kills concrete. You do not want to put a lot of water in your concrete. You'd rather have these additives, and then you get very dense concrete. That's number one. Number two, the structural design for a pool. There are, there is a CSA code of how much reinforcing steel you have to put in a, in a tank. And that's the minimum amount of reinforcing steel. And that's something like two percent of the volume has to be reinforcing steel. Our company goes to four percent, which is double the minimum standard in a swimming pool. And what that does is it eliminates, it eliminates cracking in the pool. And that's extremely important. I mean, I can give you a pool that meets all the standards, and if your pool cracks, all I can say is, well, it meets the standard, so we're good. And now, will you get a fine crack in the pool? Yes, you will. Every, every pool will get a fine crack somewhere. But it will not leak. It will be what we call a shrink, a minor shrinkage crack, but it will never leak. It's, it's visible, but no question, it won't leak. No water will penetrate the reinforcing steel. I mean, I've never seen a swimming pool that's been removed where the reinforcing steel is rusted. I mean, even with poor concrete, the, the reinforcing steel doesn't rust. Concrete, I mean, the CN Tower in Toronto is made out of concrete. They didn't make that out of steel or stainless steel. That's because it stands up. Concrete is, is, has got the longest life. I mean, I've got, well, I've got, we're renovating a swimming pool right now, a residential pool that we built thirty-five years ago. And the only reason we're renovating is it, they put, it's an outdoor swimming pool with tile on it. There wasn't one square inch of tile off in that pool, but the owner who bought the house hated the color. It was brown, he just hated it. And he put a glass tile, and we're warranting that glass tile for twenty-five years. And when we blasted that concrete, it was perfect. It was, the concrete is in perfect condition. There were, there were no weak spots whatsoever. And that's because, I mean, this goes back, I guess, to my father, water kills concrete. You, you can't put a lot of water in it. You have to have, there's, there's what they call a water-cement ratio, and we have to follow that. And the concrete plant has to follow that, and they have quality control, and there'll be concrete testing, et cetera, to make sure that we get the quality of concrete that we need.
Just to, just to add one more thing to that, too. You know, Bernie talked about the, the design of the concrete, and the way it's mixed, and the additives and so on. Not all concretes are equal. They're, they're designed for different purposes. The, the pool that we proposed is an F-one design or an F-one mix, which is suitable for freezing conditions. It's for that purpose.
Specifically made for freeze-thaw condition. Let me tell you, your, your weather conditions here are simple to deal with compared to, if you go to some places like Texas, where we have expanding soils, that's worse than frost to deal with, much worse. I mean, this, this condition is not bad.
And we're looking at a pool right now in a Callowood as well. And we, we know that we're going to have some frost considerations there.
It's permafrost.
Yeah, that's permafrost up there. It's a, it's in Baffin Island locations.
Dave, if I can just mention for counsel, the other reason we're relatively comfortable with a concrete pool is that we've had one for thirty years. It's, it's what we have.
Yeah.
And the basin's not leaking. We have some plumbing over the last few years inside that's caused us a little grief, but we have a level of comfort with concrete pool.
And just to comment on that, that's, that's lasted very well. That pool is, it appears to be a shot pre-applied pool, which is a pneumatically-applied concrete. You don't get near the integrity of pneumatically-applied concrete. You don't get near the integrity of pneumatically-applied concrete than you do a casted concrete. They're two different animals. The pool that you are getting now is far superior structurally and every other way we believe to what's existed.
And piping, as you mentioned, that's the weak leak in a swimming pool. And what we do is, we oversize our wall thicknesses because what we like to do is, we like to run our piping inside our pool wall. And basically, the pipe just becomes a conduit for the water. We could make the pipe out of cardboard as far as I'm concerned because the water will just run through the concrete. But we do use Schedule 40 PVC pipe. So all the piping, as much as possible, I would say 90% of the piping in your pool will be totally encased in concrete. But from the edge of the pool to where it goes into the mechanical room, which is like maybe 20 feet, that will not be encased in concrete. However, if we ever have to repair a leak, we know that leak is between that point and that 20 feet. That's where that leak is going to be. It's not going to be anywhere else.
And we provide ASB drawings at the end of the project so we know where every line is.
Exactly, where every line is. I mean, we want to eliminate those kind of problems for you, the underground leaks.
And quite frankly, we don't have many of those problems.
Brown shift. And that's why we put it in the pool wall. Because the pool wall does not shift. Does not shift.
Now, this next sketch is really just a schematic representation of what was on the previous page. So not to beat it to death too much, but the design, you know, we have the beach entry from the building. You see the palm trees, so as you're walking down the beach, there are the three palm trees and the spray features in between them. Lots of features. We've got, you know, Gus the Gator on one side and Old Salty on the other side, the crocodile and the dolphin as the youngsters walk in. We've got the tipping buckets on the way down to a lazy river area, as well as what we call a bubble couch or a bubble area, which is really just air bubbles coming up from the bottom of the floor. It's a lot of fun for the people using it.
And there's water umbrella too.
And the water umbrella around the left-hand side as well. Yeah.
We find you need as many toys as possible because that's what keeps the young ones coming back. Because that's where the fun is. Building a still-water pool with no spray jets or anything is really boring now for kids. It's just way too boring now. As a matter of fact, the older people like it too, but they don't want to admit it.
And then, you know, partway down the beach area, as you sort of move toward the lap pool from the beach entry pool, and you know, some of the folks are going to just walk right over to the lap pool, the ones who want to do training and preparation and so on. But on the way down, on the way to the lap pool, you can see we've got that lazy river area. That's going to be a fun area as well. We've got, you know...
Sorry, Maggie? Maggie was going to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The reason I talked about the palm tree and the lifeguard is because some pool not too far from here has had exactly that very sad experience.
But that palm tree, the branches of the palm tree are up here, like way up here. That's why we put them on top of that, what's called a peninsula that goes across. They're not in the water. The trees are above the water.
And there's one other thing to think about too, Maggie. You know, you see a lot of the posters around for motorcycle safety. There's a famous poster that says, "Easy hider." And somebody's holding up a pencil and you can't see the motorcycle beyond the pencil because the pencil's closed. The nice thing about the design is that nobody can be standing in close proximity to those palm trees. So the lifeguards are all well-removed from that. So now, instead of being this obstruction to their field of vision, it's this obstruction. So it's very difficult to hide a bather with the palm trees.
Okay, so that's the question I have for you. When we visited a pool in Edmonton, they told us that the lifeguard association, for no fear at all, reviews those type of things because they're quite cognizant of the difficulty associated with that and can tell us if we can manage with one lifeguard or none. Do you ever approach them?
We... Often, our architect approaches those people, yes, if the owner requests that. The only... My only comment on that is, I mean, safety is very important and we believe we've designed this in a very safe manner. I find they sometimes overcompensate a bit and they take some of the fun out a bit. I mean, there's a fine line there about, you know, how far you can go. I mean, you are going to have to have lifeguards in strategic places here. There's no question about that.
How many lifeguards do we normally have? Do you have to...
We have to a certain amount for the...
For the number of people, right?
Based on the bather load.
So you need at least two, one or two...
I would say there's two on deck at all times.
At least two, yes.
Two on deck at all times?
Would be typical for our...
Which would be fine then, because there's visibility from all angles.
So what is required for here? You know, I don't know by the code.
We'll verify for sure.
I have to verify. I do not know that exactly.
Because the Alberta code is just a little bit different than the Ontario code.
But they're all generally... They're close.
They tend to mirror one another, but based on the bather load of 401, we'll just double-check.
But why don't we get their... Let's get their input anyways. I mean, it doesn't hurt to get their input.
Yeah, I just share information that was given to us when we were looking at different pools.
Look, it's easy to make a change now. It's not easy to make a change six months ago.
And that doesn't cost anything.
No, yeah, that's right.
Do it as a service.
It's worthwhile doing, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good idea.
So those are the main features of the boat. I just want to try and keep it moving here. We're 45 minutes already. So anyway, the features we talked about, there they are listed out. And, you know, Jeff and Dave have, you know, the full proposal with all the same information.
We also have some big umbrellas because we need shade. A lot of people want to stay out of that sun. So in the seating area, we've got an umbrella in the middle so that we've got shade.
And then I think we proposed two anchorage points beyond that as well.
You can move the umbrella to another location. It's not fixed there permanently. And you can also take it out in the winter and store it.
Do you know how strong a wind that will take?
You get strong winds here.
Over 70 kilometer an hour?
But they're very removable.
Okay.
Look, when you get heavy winds like that, you have to turn them down.
You got to take them down.
Yeah, okay.
So Dave, what is your experience with hot tubs, jacuzzis? Lots of people want them, like them. What's coming on the maintenance?
In a commercial environment, they are difficult to maintain. The difficulty with spas is that... Well, a few things. They run at a higher temperature, number one. So your chemicals are broken down more quickly, bacteria grow more quickly. So that's one thing, the higher temperature. Number two is, they tend to have a high bather load. There's a lot of people in and out, so there's a lot of introduction of bacteria. Probably the single biggest challenge with spas is it's a relatively small body of water. That makes it difficult to control relative to a large body of water. It's influenced much more readily. I mean, you know, the typical human, and I'm not one of them, but a typical person displaces about 25 US gallons or so. Well, you know, in an eight-by-eight hot tub, there's really only 850 to 1,000 gallons of water in there. So it's a relatively high percentage of volume. So, you know, the surface area of the bodies and so on. So if you get eight people in a hot tub, that's a major contamination. If you get eight people in a 25-meter-six-lane pool, it's not a big deal.
Okay. But bathers love it because on a cooler day, they go into the warmer water. They just love it. That's your trade-off. Higher maintenance, but the users will use the tub a lot and they will enjoy the tub.
And there's a higher maintenance to the finishes as well. Like plaster finishes, for example, and painted finishes really aren't recommended.
Should be a tile.
Yeah, it should be. All spas should be tile. Because the plaster will break down at an accelerated rate as well as well as paint.
Because we're not... Another thing we do is we build conversation pool, what we call a conversation pool, where the temperature is maybe 93, 94 degrees instead of 100 to 102, about a spa is. So that's warmer water. And, you know, on a cooler day with some wind, they like to jump into that and just sit there and warm up and then they get back into the pool. So there is a big benefit to it, but there will be some more maintenance. I'm not seeing one, or no, we don't.
There is not one in this proposal.
There was no...
And that was not part of the request for proposal either. Just some more details about the design. You know, we've got the water umbrella, which is great fun. The palm trees visually draw people to the pool. I mean, they're going to be quite visible, so people will see them. The geysers are great for the young kids. You know, they like the geysers. And I got to tell you, one of my favorites is the tumble buckets. And that's because of the anticipation, you know? You never win the... You don't know when it's going to happen, you know? The kids stand under it and all of a sudden splash and everybody's having a great time.
So just like here...
Sorry.
So these features right here, they're not actually in the proposed cost? Those are all extras?
These are all in the base proposal.
They're all in the base proposal.
What we did was...
And the base proposal has three more rough-ins. Because you can take that palm tree, lift it out, and take it to another spool if you have one. And put another tumble bucket if you want, without removing any concrete to do that work, which is really nice with the system we have.
All of our toys, you employ what's called an OmniPod. So, and it's universal to all of the toys that we've included in the proposal. So you can move them to different locations or you can move them, like Bernie said, to another pool. And we've put three additional OmniPods in for future purposes if you wish to add more toys down the road. This is what I really love talking about. Our pool plumbing's quite atypical in that it has this commercial, organized appearance and look. In fact, you know, we're working right now at the Ripley's Aquarium in Toronto, Ontario. And it's a big facility. They've got sharks and manta sea rays and all of these things. There are a lot of special considerations. But one of the things we really picked up on, and, you know, we've got this philosophy of continuous improvement. That's become a cash raise over the last 20 years, but there is a reality to wanting to become better all the time. And one of the things we noticed at Ripley's is, they feature their equipment. It's not in a dark corner. It's not in the basement. It's there for everyone to see. And in fact, in Strathroy, where we're building now, we've actually put a large window right in the side of the equipment room building on the pool's side so that people can look in and see the equipment to showcase it, number one, but also to set a standard of quality and expectation for the entire facility. Because, you know, if the mudroom doesn't look nice and clean, the rest of the house might be questionable. So we take a great deal of pride in it. And I just wanted to go back to Counselor Doll's comment about the... And I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Counselor. About oversizing equipment. We do tend... We have a tendency to make our equipment slightly larger than it needs to be. And the primary points that we do that are the filtration, the filter size itself, the surface area of the filter, and the size of the pipes. Because what happens when you do that is, the velocity of water moving through the sand bed that actually cleans the water gets much slower. When that happens, it becomes a very natural filtration system, just like wells, you know? The water moves nice and slowly. It gets much cleaner. We can improve our filtration to a point just by controlling things like pipe sizes and filter sizes to achieve a higher water quality than is achievable if you go with the manufacturer's standard recommendations. So we like to exceed those for that reason.
And the building code is always a minimum, so we like to go more than that. Because at one time, turnover rates used to be, every eight hours, all the water had to go through the filter. Now, the codes are four hours. And that's because we're getting higher bather loads, we're putting more play features in pools, we've got more real young fellows and gals in the pools, and you know what they may do in the pool. And so we need to have, you know, good turnover rates. And that's very important. Very important. Because once you get cloudy water, you have to shut the pool down. But I do want to stress that, you know, crystal-clear water, like in those bottles we have on the table, is a function of filtration and chemicals. You have to put the right amount of chemical in. So we've done part one. We've given you the right system, and then you just have to maintain that system with the chemicals.
And the automatic chemical controllers that we provided do a really good job of maintaining that proper chemistry level all the time. But this is the sort of installation that you can expect in terms of what it's going to look like. And that's not typical, believe me.
And all the equipment is, it's commercial equipment. We don't take a bunch of small residential filters and line them up. We go with large, commercial filters.
Now, in this case, the other consideration we have is access to the equipment rooms. Because, I mean, there were two options. Either revise the room so that we can get a certain type of equipment in, or could we get the right quality of equipment in the existing structure? And the answer is yes, we could. So that's what we did. Because it saves costs and provides the same quality. And that's the goal. Our schedule right now, we've got it laid out to start in August of this year and to be complete for the season next year. Just in a nutshell. It's all laid out there.
Yeah, just for council's information, that would mean that we would do some demolition prior to that, so that would be the new pool construction schedule.
So with that, the pool cannot be open at all this year?
And that's a conversation that we wanted to have later and discuss, Jeff, about some of the things that could be done. So there's the... Just the schedule can fail. I don't think there's any need to go through that many details. We have a policy about technical support. We support our clients forever. If there's a leaky valve or something that's a minor nuisance and you call us, we're going to schedule a repair. We're going to schedule the warranty work that needs to happen to do that. If you have an instance where something's gone wrong, a pump's failed, a filter's failed, something relatively serious has happened so that the pool is shut down, that's when we launch what Bernie has key...
Massive action to solve that problem because a closed pool is not acceptable to us. So if your pool is closed for any reason, you need to call us and we will take massive action, drop everything we have to, to get you back in operation. Now, that happens very rarely. Maybe once a year, we have an issue where we have an issue where something like that occurs, a pool is closed down for some reason. And that could be a pool that could be 15, 20 years old. When that happens, we take massive action because it's important to us that you're in a pool. We know the season is short, therefore we have to have you there. And that's extremely important.
You know, Dave had a good experience when he called our references. We didn't know who he was going to call. We gave him a list of multiple projects, multiple people to call. And, you know, I happened to call you one day for some reason. I can't remember the exact reason. But Dave said, "I'm just going through your references, but I have a problem." And I said, "Oh, jeez, what's that?" And he said, "I can't find a bad one." Well, this is why. And we pride ourselves on not having bad references. Sometimes things go wrong. The difference is, when things go wrong, you have to make them right. And that's what we're very good at doing.
We're not perfect. And I am the first to tell you that. But when something goes wrong, you have more attention. Like, my phone number is 226-338-8201. You need to call me if you have a problem. Call me, please. I don't care if the pool committee calls or the council's call. We will solve the problem. We're not perfect, but we will solve the problem. We try to be as perfect as we can. We work really hard at it. Because the other thing, I will guarantee you, that this pool will be better than the last pool we built. Because every pool is getting better, everyone is better. I mean, we, we have, we have meetings where, I mean, we have an issue right now where we're having some issues with, I think it was poly tubing on a job. It lasts about a year and a half and it's disintegrating, so, you know, we need to solve that problem. Either it's different tubing or something that, or investigate why this is happening, because this shouldn't happen. So we're, we, you know, our clients have our attention, we want to make every pool better than the last pool without a question.
And when our next client calls Karston, we want to say, we want Karston to be able to say, "They were great."
And every single project that we've ever built is on our master list, and we give that to any client.
We don't exclude any.
I don't, they don't take anyone off the list because, have they had a problem? Maybe, but we solve it. We're not, we're not going to walk away. I mean, I've been in this business, well, my, my parents started the business, they were very proud of their business. I'm real proud of what we're doing. I'm real proud of what we're doing. I've got a daughter, I'm trying to get into the business, not there yet, we're working on it. So, I mean, we want this thing to keep continuing for a long time. I have a brother in the business who's about 10 years younger than me, and we're not going anywhere. I mean, we've been around since the late 50s is when my father started the business. And, you know, there aren't too many companies that last that long. And we, we are, we are definitely planning everything for the future. And we're just going to keep continuing, I mean, we just like building pools and we're going to build a lot more pools.
Are you located in Western Canada, offices?
No, we don't have an office. I, I did have an office at one time in Edmonton. And we find that we can, it is easier for us to be centralized where we are in... I mean, I've got two 50-meter pools I'm building in Surrey right now. Like, we're not building the entire pool, but we're doing the majority of those pools. I just finished a job in Preston, LA, a year and a half ago. We're, we're, we're doing some more work in Alberta, right, that's coming up very shortly. I mean, if, if you have a call in Phoenix, Arizona, we just go, I mean, there's a cost to having an office here, we just ship our people there. I mean, every Monday morning, it's an influx to the airport for our people.
We call the office at Kishner a project support center, and we do that for a good reason, you know? It's easier to have that sort of central control to all the feelers that are out everywhere and to maintain the sort of the quality and the philosophies that we try to promote. When you start, the concern is that if you have multiple offices with multiple people managing those offices, that that philosophy can become diluted, and we don't want that to happen.
So what kind of training will you do for our staff?
Okay, very good, good, great question. And that, this is very, this is the most important thing I'm going to say today. I think I said that before. This is important for you. You're going to get a new pool, and it's going to be different than the pool you have. So we have what we call a three-part training process. The first, we have three stages. First stage, we come out as soon as the pool is complete, and we will train your people how to operate the pool. But like, but just like if you bought, if you bought an aircraft, the, the guy who's going to run the air, or, or drive the airplane has to have a license. So your guy has to have some experience. We, we can't teach somebody, you know, who has no experience at all, because that takes, that takes years of experience, and you already have that, which is good. So we come out and we spend two days to train him, we're going to be here two full days. Stage two training will happen two weeks after you open to the public. Because running a swimming pool where very few people are using it is very easy to operate. But when you, the pool opens, it's a new pool and you get peak bather loads, that's when your operator will have a few concerns or issues. So we're, we have a date set, we will set that date during our 60-day aquatic sprint. And we'll know exactly when our guy's coming back, so your operator knows when he's coming back, he'll keep all his questions, and we'll spend a whole day on resolving the problems he has with the system that he's not, doesn't feel comfortable with. Then we come back for stage three training, which is 30 days after stage two training. Because we want to make sure he clearly understands how to operate that pool. Our, you know, we want to make, if, if we train our people, our operators well, we have less calls, and you have less grief, and he has, and that operator has less grief. So we, and, and our training is done by, we have one person, that's all he does every single day is training. Because he's got to do like four days for every pool. I mean, he's busy every single day training. And, and so he really knows what, where the operators have issues. Because sometimes we have new equipment, new types of equipment. So, you know, Jim knows already, you know, what the potential issues are, where he's got to spend the time with your people so that they can operate this pool. And, but the other thing I like to do is, I like to keep it simple. We've done some projects that are so complicated, we find operators just turn everything off. They turn it off because it's just too complicated. So we want to keep the system as simple as possible. And that, it's, I think it's a much better system if it's simple. Too complicated, we have some jobs, there's so many controls and, and, you know, some guys are sitting computers all day saying, "Oh, there's something wrong here, this is up a point," or "it's down a point." Look, it doesn't matter, some of this stuff. So the best thing is to have a guy, operator, walk into the equipment room, looks at the dials, he can listen to the pumps. You can't listen to a pump on a computer, he can, he can listen, he can tell if there's something going wrong with the pump. So I like to keep it simple, I, I know that works better.
There's a major advantage to that multiple-stage training, you know, those three stages that Bernie talked about? So we do the stage one prior to turnover, you know, just prior to turnover, at turnover, the second stage, you know, a couple of weeks after opening, and then a third stage about a month after that second stage. So all the questions that, that develop, that Bernie was talking about, as, as the guys are running the pool, they will have questions. But the other nice thing is, just like any other kind of learning, it takes repetition and it takes reinforcement, coming back and learning the same things again. I, I, you know, I, I, I like to think that I, you know, I, every once in a while go back to university and do a course by correspondence. I like to build airplanes and I like to, you know, learn to play guitar and stuff, because I think it's good for my brain to do that. But I recognize that I've got to go back and I've got to, I've got to do it, I've got to do it again and do it again, because if I don't, I'll never get it. Nobody's that smart. I'm a, I take repetition.
So I think we'll need to question now.
Yeah.
Yeah. On, there's, oh, yeah.
There's a section here, talks about some alternates or add-ons, and, and there's a few, a couple of them, I just got questions about, because it gives items and then what you would add, the price. And the first one is concrete deck. Now, when I look at that, I say, "Well, what else is there?"
No, all that is part of the basic package.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
The concrete, the concrete deck is not part of the...
But it says add, you know, 73...
It wasn't because it, it, the town, there was a reason for it. I don't know exactly what your reason was.
In our proposal, the scope for the contractor was the basin, 1.3 meters outside the basin, and we're responsible for all the other decking.
So, so, so you're saying that the, the town would do the decking?
That's right.
It's part of our country.
It's part of our piece.
It is a contract, it, it is a concrete deck, it's just that they don't do it.
That's right.
We just offered it as an alternate, saying that if you wish.
He said they would if we wanted.
Well, yeah, and we wanted to give you what the cost was too, so you had some idea of where your end number was going to be.
And I would suggest, and again, this is all preliminary, we haven't even awarded the design contract yet, so these guys are, flow out here in good faith, but we may very well contract them to put in a concrete deck. If that's what it looks like, it's a thing to do, but in the proposal, that was alternative.
Okay, so, so that, that answers.
And there are, there are benefits to doing that, having the same guy do it, because once we leave and somebody else comes in to do certain work, and maybe they want to trench for something, and there may be something underground that he shouldn't, that he shouldn't be trenching in that area. And he may not break something, but he may rupture it, and then it may break in a short period of time. So, you know, there are some advantages to having sort of single-source responsibility, if, if the prices are competitive.
They were.
And, and we try hard to be very competitive.
Okay. The next thing is colored concrete now, is that if you do the concrete deck?
Right, yeah. You can add color to it.
Okay, so, so that, that would be if you did the con, that would go with it, with concrete deck if you did the concrete deck?
Correct.
Okay. The next one is hydraulic pool heating now. Is that something that was also the town was going to take care of? I mean, what, what other heating system is there for the pool?
It's not the mechanical heating system, it would be if we, if I recall, it's the covering.
No, it's, it's a little different than that, and there are two ways, there are two ways to, well, there are lots of ways to heat a pool, but the standard way has always been to use one of these, sort of an open burner heater, where you've got the heat exchanger and the, and the open flame underneath that, that heats the boiler. But disadvantage of that kind of a heating system is that you get a lot of condensation, and that condensation leads to degradation of the heat exchanger and it fails. So, you know, there, there, that's, that's one way to do it.
And that is the most common type of pool.
And it is the most common.
That's what we have now.
That's what you have now, yeah. And what, what you see in a lot of other systems, you know, larger buildings, hospitals, community centers and so on, they'll have a central boiler. And from that boiler, you know, they've got all their hydraulic lines or their hotlines running out to the heating systems for the building, snow melt areas out in the parking area, things like that, and the pool system. So you're just running a hotline from a boiler to a heat exchanger and then back to the boiler, and then on the other side of the heat exchanger, you're circulating pool water. So that means that the pool water, the, the boiler never sees pool water, just the heat exchanger does. So there's, the advantage of a hydraulic system like that is, is quite long-lasting. I mean, the boiler will continue to run for years and years.
It'll last the other system.
It'll last the other system, yeah, yeah. By, by long stretch.
But there is a cost associated to that additional life, and that's where you have to make a decision.
So that's just the... So it was just a provisional item, they said, okay, here's one of the things we talked about. So we've, we've got, you know, the one heating system, that's a standard heating system in the base bed, with this as an alternate.
Okay, so the current proposal is kind of like the one we've got now, basically.
Correct.
Where, where you actually have a, a boiler where the direct flame heats the cool water.
That's right.
And with, with a hydraulic system, you're, you're saying that you'd have a, a boiler that, that heats the building, but it's with a heat exchanger to, to...
Well, it could be, it would be just the boiler for the pool.
It would just for the pool, not for the building, in this case, because it's a seasonal building.
It could do the building, but it's...
But it would run with it, using a heat exchanger for...
Correct.
Rather than, rather than directly heating pool water?
Exactly.
Okay.
The other thing is when the chemicals can get out of balance on the standard pool heater, you, you, it can, it can corrode the, the heat exchanger very quickly.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, okay, other, I see if there's any other things that, underwater lighting, is that, isn't that kind of standard in a pool?
Actually, for outdoor pools, it's not.
Not, not.
Unless you're swimming after dark, you don't, you don't need the underground.
It is in residential, you know, residential pools quite often have outdoor lighting, because that's where people spend their time in the evening. But in the commercial marketplace, it's not very common.
And it's high, it's high maintenance, real high maintenance.
Okay, the other item on here that I don't totally understand what it means is the gutter, deck level gutter, is that something that's important?
Sure, it's just a different style of pool. The, the pool that we propose is a skimmer-style pool. And so that means there's these multiple suction ports around the perimeter of the pool. Most people are familiar with that, where the water level's down about six inches in, in the pool. And so it's sort of in the middle of the skimmer line. A gutter pool, or a deck level pool, or a perimeter flow pool, it goes by a lot of different names, the water actually flows over the perimeter of the pool, around the entire perimeter of the pool. There's a big expense associated with that.
The water's the same level as the deck.
Same level as the deck.
Okay. Same level.
Yeah, that's, that's the basic...
It's a very nice-looking pool.
It has very effective skimming, of course.
Excellent, it keeps the surface really clean.
It's as good as it gets.
That's as good as it gets.
It's like an overflowing glass water.
So it runs over and then down the gutter, down the drain.
You do a gutter, but then you have to have, have what they call a surge tank or a balance tank associated with it, and you modulate the level of the, so now you're controlling the water level in the tank instead of the pool, because the pools always fall. But when 401 people jump into the pool, that water's got to have a place to go.
Okay.
So it goes in the surge tank.
So, 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 so then, this is, the pool we've got quoted is like the pool we have now.
A skimmer-type pool.
We've just got a skimmer ports along the...
We worked really hard to, I mean, you know, the, the, the tipping point was known as part of the request for proposal. So our goal was to provide the best value that we could for the funds allotted. So that's, that's where we landed on that.
Okay, thank you, that's...
One question, Counselor Smith, like, could one thing with a lot of these points is, as we went through the process, and it took us probably a couple of weeks longer than we initially hoped, but we had, because of the variety of proposals, one of the other proposals was a, an overflow drain pool. So we wanted to see, okay, if we wanted to add that with these guys, well, would it add, and are we still apples to apples? With the hydraulic heating, we want, we sent out an email after to all three saying, "If we wanted to look at upgraded HVAC equipment, more efficient, some other things, what would that look like?" So much of this is in response to requests we put out, wanted to make sure we were apples-to-apples comparison, as much as we could, even though they were different systems. But also we were curious about looking to see if it was reasonable to put in some upgrades at this point in time.
I have a question of Jeff. Our basic cost is $1,100,000 approximately.
Yeah.
What did you expect the add-ons would cost, the total add-on that we're thinking about?
Well, right now we can build the pool as proposed and have a great pool for $1.14 million.
Yeah, but then, are these add-ons a benefit to attract people to the pool?
And I guess that's something that we're going to have to look at here down the road. But for the purposes of awarding the contract, we didn't want to start adding them in because they, they manipulate the price. And we didn't base this heavily on price, because any of the three can manipulate the size and amenities and equipment and everything else to make the price look better. So we, they're there as options, those, those reviews have to happen, and that'll be part of the process that we'll go through, should Counsel agree with us and award the contract. Do I think there's some good ones to look at?
Yeah, I do.
Out of those options, how many of them should be built when we build the swimming pool, rather than sometime down the road? Because it'd be less expensive to build them when we build the pool than down the road.
That would be determined as part of the design phase, Counselor, to ensure that we're within budget, because obviously we have limited funds. This contract is not the full cost of what we have.
No.
You know, with our other investment, right?
Like Dave said, and I think Counsel's aware of this, we put the max amount in the request or proposal. We didn't just take arbitrary numbers in, because what I did is I took the total budget the Counsel's allotted and allowed for the project. We backed off the dollars, we thought we were going to be responsible outside the scope of the pool contractor, and then told them what was left. So if we start finding that they can provide something for us that we budgeted a little less, or it comes, comes in less, well, then maybe that makes good sense to add a couple more water features or a couple things, you know? And I may be wrong here, and this may be a dangerous statement to make, but I'm not looking to necessarily come way under budget on this project. I'm not trying to pull in a rock-bottom project here. We know what we have, and I'd like to get as much as we can for that dollar. So if we can find some savings in the part I pulled out outside the scope, and it makes sense to add two more spray features or hydraulic heating, we want to look at that, or we'll save a few dollars for that water slide sooner than later. Now, those are all things we'll start to work through. Okay, just one other thing there, you guys mentioned that, that you bring your own people, and is there, is there some way that the trades folks in Karston can...
Oh, look, absolutely, and we had talked about that the first time we met. We will, like, we bring our key people in, we want to hire local people, we want local involvement. We think that's really important. There are, I mean, for example, we will attempt to hire local people, and if we need any trades, like, we, we have our own concrete people, our own finisher people, we have our own plumbers, we have our own...
Tile setters.
Tile setters. Carpenters. But we would like to get some carpenters locally, we would like to get, you know, maybe, we don't need a lot of plumbers, because I like to keep my plumbers here for almost the entire duration of the job, so we may need one or two helpers. And we will hire locally, and we want to hire locally, absolutely. If we need any trades, we'll definitely hire locally. But, you know, we'll be buying all the concrete locally, and that's a big number for all the concrete.
Perfect, thanks. Is there any other questions that we have right now? Or all... Well, we certainly like to thank Dave Bertrum and Bernie Gold for, for flying out here and meeting with us and presenting to us. We sure appreciate you, some, thank your presentation and your, and your, and your...
Expertise.
Yeah, expertise there is, is probably exactly what, you know, the town needs. So we appreciate you guys coming out here and presenting to us. Appreciate Dave Pillen for doing all the hard work, a lot of the legwork and things like that, and the rest of the park department, and administration especially as well, so. Like to thank everyone for that, and I think, I think we probably, while you guys are here, maybe we can have a, a motion to maybe recommend Alcoa Local Pools be our facility, or our, our pool builders and construction people there, so.
I think I'm ready to make such a motion, because I think Dave Pillen has looked at those contracts very carefully, along with administration. And I really believe, after hearing your presentation and your, the recommendations, and following checks, checks that you did on the company, I think it's safe to say we have a good company to work with. Therefore, I would be making a recommendation to Counsel that we hire Alcoa Pool to do Alcoa.
Okay, so any, any questions to that? Okay, all in favor of Alcoa Local Pool? So a recommendation will go to Counsel and go from there, so thanks very much.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
It was greatly appreciated.
Appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not for sure in seven days it'll be official, everything goes well.
Right, great, we'll look forward to the official word.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Now, the, you know that, the picture we had of your pool, you know, that rendering? If you want, we can get one blown up for you, for your, you know, if you're having any public meetings or anything, or if you want to just...
Yeah, you mentioned an open house and a discussion.
Sell a concept, we, we could use it.
Just send a little bit over the next few weeks and then...
Yeah, maybe we could.
And print one out. And then the other thing is, we can give it to you electronically as well, Jeff, so it could be broadcast on the line along with, you know, some hard renderings if you wish.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, you bet.
I'll run the voice. Okay, we're ready to carry on with our third, third delegation of the evening there, which is the Kim Lickinger, who is the manager of the Carson District Association for the Handicap. She just wants to present to us her concerns of the provincial funding being cut from, or the funding being cut from, from their association, so maybe we could have Kim come up and, or you can stand at the podium here, sure.
Thank you. My name's Ellen DeHinlant. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity that I have to come and present to you. I really appreciate this, that you're all willing to listen to us and to our concerns. I'd like to introduce myself first, I'm Kim Lickinger, and I'm the director of the Carson District Association for the Handicap. Carson District Association for the Handicap has been in operation for the last 25 years, and as of now, we provide support to 27 individuals with varying degrees of developmental and physical disabilities. We provide home living supports, we provide residential support, and the biggest component of our program is we provide community access to the individuals that we support who have these disabilities. The mission statement of our association is, the association aims to enhance quality of life for individuals and their families. The association is committed to continuous quality improvement and being outcome focused. Our objective is to support individuals to achieve their highest potential through personalized supports, family involvement, and community participation. Through community access, some of the things that we do in our town is, we operate the Barton Barn, which is a thriving secondhand social enterprise. We also fulfill the recycling contract for the town of Carson. We support people to run the Ink Spot, which is a distributor of ink cartridges through Perfect Print out of Leftbridge. We make, we have other various enterprises that we do, we make corner sticks that we sell at various places in Carson and Watertown, we make the bundle, wood bundles that we sell throughout this little corner of the world. And we also provide a shredding service to our community. All these efforts are through individuals who volunteer their time through community access, to fill their responsibility with staff support. We also support people in their personal development. We participate in the Road to Care Festival every year, we teach skills in daily living, and last year, we put on a play down at the theater, which featured the individuals that we support in highlighted roles in a full theater production that was entitled The Princess and the Dragon, and it was a huge success accepted by our community. We also have two bowling teams that are participating in Leftbridge and Integrated Bowling League that have had huge success, and I think they are now in their sixth or seventh year of participating in this bowling league. I'd just like to read you an article that was posted in the Harvard Herald on May 20th, or March 29th. It kind of says what the plight is and why I'm here. It's, it's quoting Associate Minister Frank Overly. "A community support program for disabled Albertans that was cut almost in half this year's, in this year's budget, wasn't getting good enough results," said the Associate Minister responsible for persons with developmental disabilities. And persons with developmental disability is our funder, the bureaucracy that gets money from the government that funds us, agencies in Southern Alberta. Frank Overly defends the government's decision to cut community access support programs by $42 million in the province for the 2013-14 budget, as part of the province's plan to develop more inclusive community participation for Albertans with disabilities. The program helps PDD clients attend outings and participate in recreational activities in their neighborhoods as part of an effort to ward off isolation and get involved in community life. "But it wasn't working like it should," Overly said. "It's obvious that we're not achieving the results that we want," there, Overly said in an interview Friday. I would like to add that we've exceeded those, those standards. We participated in a survey to measure the quality of life for individuals with developmental disabilities. This was a project sponsored by the government, where people with developmental disabilities interviewed individuals receiving PDD-funded supports. And what they felt their quality of life was in eight domains, and I do have the results that I can share with you later, if you'd like to do, but some of these domains were emotional well-being, personal well-being, and social inclusion. In the domain of social inclusion, the people receiving supports through the Carson Association scored higher than the provincial average of all Albertans. So we far exceed what Minister Overly was saying that we were failing at. Our association exceeds that. The article goes on to say, loading people on a bus and taking them to Tim Hortons at 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon is not community inclusion. It makes me so sad to think that something most Albertans take for granted, as having a break or coffee break in the afternoon, can be demonized because a person has a disability. A person that needs to access Tims on a bus and with a support worker, all of a sudden is a bad thing, and what a horrible thing for him to say in the public, in the newspaper. The overall PDD, the article goes on to say, the overall PDD budget actually saw a slight increase to the budget, raising it from $694 million to $688 million from the year before. The government shuffled part of the money from the cuts to community program into raises for the staff that the Redford government promised as part of its efforts to close the salary graph with similar provincial employees a year ago. So we were promised a year ago a raise, we were promised a 5% raise last year, which we received, we were promised a 15% raise this year, and then another 10% in the 2014-15 budget. This is a much needed raise in our field, as our starting wage at our agency is $13.65 an hour, for the work that we do with, with people with these disabilities. The raise promised at 15% this year now comes out to be closer to 10%. But it's a 10% that is not really true to 10%. On Thursday, liberal human service critic called the government shell-gain to cut to the frontline services to pay for the wages that promised. What they're doing is they're taking the 40% out of community access, so 40% out of services that people with disabilities are receiving, and to abet the need for the raise that they promised, they're moving that almost exact amount of money into funding to afford the raises for the people that they promised not on the backs of vulnerable Albertans. Swan says that the government is trying to balance its budget on the backs of vulnerable Albertans. Some agencies rely mostly on community programs to fund their services. We do, we do count on community a lot to fund the supports that we give. We do all our fundraising from the Barton Barn, we call it a social enterprise, because we can work with people that might not work as fast as other people work, in order to provide good service to the, to the community. We also do that through our recycling contract. We have support staff that help them, but how we have it set up is we get the recycling done, and I hope we do it in a timely and good fashion, which is what we strive for, but we can ebb and flow with the needs of the people that we support, in order to have the best product, if you will, out there to provide support to them and to provide Carson with what they need. Overly said that he understands concerns amongst support, among the support community, but insists that changes are necessary, as the province places more focus on helping disabled Albertans find meaningful employment. "We want people living as independently as possible and contributing to the fullest of their ability," he said. According to Overly, amongst 10,200 Albertans with developmental disabilities, about 30% of those people are unemployed. When the Human Services Superministry underwent result-based budgeting review last year, the Community Access Support Program didn't measure up based on the quality of life and inclusion measurement. I disagree with that for our agency personally, I am not sure of the provincial results overall, but I do have, and I can show you that too, I do have the provincial results as to the PDD-funded support. So they made two graphs, one of how Albertans overall felt in those eight domains of life, and then how we compared to other PDD-funded individuals in those eight domains of life.
So Kim, can I, can I just ask a question? Any interest in time and things like that, you've got a long meeting to go, you're looking for a letter?
Yes.
To go to the MLA?
Yes.
Of support for the, for the Carson and District Associations for the Handicap?
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple of questions, Counselor Cronin and then Mayor Scott.
I just would like to ask you, Kim, did you see that coming from the, from the provincial government? One that did a survey, did you have an inkling that it was going to come to serve you negatively at the end?
Not in this way, they have been doing a lot of things along the way. I feel that the Alberta government has been doing things not as forefront as they should. They, about three years ago, they implemented a CISA segment, which is Support Intensity Scale, where they would evaluate the level of support needs that individuals have. They told families at that time that that would not be connected directly to their funding, and families started the process. Three years later, getting us to probably the end of last year, all of a sudden, they said that this would be tied to the individual's support funding. Now, as of now, they still don't have even half of the province going through this survey process, but now they're saying that aggregate scores will determine what support level people need. So they've started out saying everybody would have this, oh, now we have enough, we have an aggregate support need thing, and as of late, we had our PDD representative come to us, and in a five-minute interview over each person, we kind of arbitrarily decided what support needs these people needed, which was a horrible disservice to the people that we support. As you know, people are kind of icebergs, you know, that they, what you see is not always the support level that they need. So we are asking, sorry to keep your time, but we are asking that you write a letter in support to the services that we provide to the community through Community Access, that you see it as a valuable program, a valuable asset to our town as a whole. We also would like you to address maybe what the economic situation is in the town of Carson. We want to do due diligence to this process. We absolutely do not believe that if a person can work, they should be able to work, but there has to be a balance in that if they need support, they do need support. They're taking out the 40% out of community access, saying that they will work with agencies that want to transition into employment supports, but they're only putting $6 million back into employment supports. That doesn't add up, it's going to mean lots of services for the individuals we support, and ultimately, lots of jobs for people who are doing this work, as you can see, not to get rich off it, just because they care about the people that we support.
Mr. Chairman, I would move recommendation to counsel that we send a letter to the province as requested by Kim.
Do we need a motion for that, or can we just direction?
A recommendation.
A recommendation, okay, so motion to recommend to counsel that we offer a letter of support to them and the association there? Any questions?
This survey that the government did, did they talk to the actual individuals to get their results?
Yes, they did. What it was, is they had employed, the Alberta government employed people that have disabilities themselves to come and interview other people with disabilities. They felt that there would be a better score, a better result, as that people may feel more comfortable speaking with their peers, as opposed to people that they see as kind of having a power imbalance. So we invited in, into our agency last June to do this process, and I've brought the results here, and I can leave them with you. We're the blue, and the red is what is the provincial average of all Albertans, whether with disabilities or not disabilities. This one, again, we are the blue, but this is measured up against other people within the province that have developmental disabilities, and I can leave these with you.
Okay, and one more question.
I think I recommend following the mayor's suggestion, we do send a letter, but I think we've also got to remember, there is not an unlimited supply of money.
No, I agree, and, and I, I think that all of Alberta's facing cutbacks right now, I think the finances, I think, are in very poor, poor shape, but I think the District Association does an excellent job in the town of Carson, and so, just one more, one more question.
I also wondered, did the government ever approach your organization as to future possibility of changes in the model the services are delivered? Or didn't they just decide a cut will do?
Right now, we don't know what the cut is. I'm asking for support in anticipation of what the cut is. Our contract runs out the last day of June, we have to have signed a new contract for the first of July. As of today, I do not know what the cut is, I do not know what money we will be working with in, in the future. The timelines are very short to make these drastic changes in people's lives, and like I said, we want to do due diligence to the process. If people can be employed, absolutely, we would like them to be employed, and we want, I have a meeting with the Economic Development Committee, Committee in June, just to research those possibilities, is there things that we've missed? We want to do the process how it is, but in the meantime, we don't want people's lives to be so disruptive. What happens if they do find a, a part-time job? What happens the other part of the time of their day? Is it acceptable to stay home and play video games all day? I don't know, I don't know how we feel about that. As an agency, we work very hard to have people have a very, hopefully, good quality of life, and like you said, it proved in the survey that we did, that we're achieving those outcomes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so we have a motion to recommend to counsel, a letter of support to the Carson District Handicap Association for the Handicap, all in favor?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries, so we will offer that, and thank you for your presentation, Kim.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
We can really hear the passion that you have with that organization, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And any questions, and you're welcome to come with at any time and see the work that we do, we are open door to all.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I think it'd be beneficial for us as individual citizens to also petition the government, to let us know how we feel.
Absolutely, that was, that was part further down, sorry, I missed my presentation. We've added, we've taken out, or wrote an article in the newspaper asking that, and we also did a rally last Wednesday, ending at Gary Bickman's office, he's very aware of it. We have individuals that are very passionate about this cause, and about losing their supports during the day, it, it will have some significant impact on the people, and we know that people moved to our town because of the program that we provide. We've had many inquiries, and many people moved from larger centers because of the programs that we provide to people with disabilities.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packages, we did present the recommended budget. I'm going to go through just some highlights of changes. There's a number of things that were changed just due to a thorough review of our 2012 actuals and a thorough review of our programming. As you're aware, there was a number of cuts to some grant funding, so we've spent considerable amount of time trying to find a way that we can still balance the budget without cutting services to the community, and providing, again, a good level of service, so, without an increase in tax, as was the direction of counsel. So I'm just going to highlight a few of the changes that are, things I want to bring counsel's attention to. The first change is under provincial conditional other grants, and it's a reduction of $102,396 in our revenue, and that is due to the MSI operating funding reduction. The next change is an increase of $125,000, and that is for county pool funding. Once, we had some final numbers on, on the pool, based on the tenders that we had, and dividing the project between 2013 and 2014, because we will finish the project in 2014, there's some changes there. Bottom line on the budget is there isn't an impact, it's just a reallocation of funding between 2013 and 2014. The next change is an increase in revenue, and that is the HEAL insurance payment, and also throughout the budget, you will see that those expenses are included. That took a lot of work, because those expenses needed to be allocated by department, and not simply as a one payment item. The impact we will see, though, is when we're doing a year-to-date comparison to 2012, The impact we will see, though, is when we're doing a year-to-date comparison to 2012, or when we go to 2014 and we're looking at a year-to-date comparison on those accounts, you're going to see a spike in expenses for 2013, but it is, like I said, $1.1 million due to hail damage. On the second page, the next thing I want to bring your attention to is the FCSS grant and a reduction of $16,374. We have reduced the county's portion of the funding to $3,500. In speaking with their administration, their council has not put forward support at this point to fully fund their share of the FCSS grant.
Any reason?
That conversation is still ongoing. We continue to provide information to them, and we've asked for an explanation to be brought to, back to the FCSS board once the final decision is determined. But our understanding at this point is that only $3,500 is included in the county budget. So we reduced our budget accordingly. Again, that's, that's ongoing, and we're continuing to work with them to encourage that funding to take place. The next change I want to bring your attention to is $54,000 reduction in the pool revenue, and that is because the pool will not be in operation this year, so we removed, we removed that revenue source. We also, though, reduced some of the expenses because the pool won't be operational, but I'm going to speak to that just a little bit later here. The golf course revenue, we reduced that by $5,000, and that was due to the council motion that was put forward on that lease payment. Step wages on the next page, step wages and recreation grants, oh, sorry, tourism step wages, both of those were reduced to zero, $5,600 and $2,100 respectively, and again, that's due to changes to the provincial budget and their impact to us. Under the electrical revenue for commercial and domestic, what we did this year is we created a new account, and we split the revenue into transmission and distribution, because one of council's goals after the fourth presentation was that the transmission charges be a direct flow-through. So we felt that it was important to create those accounts so that we have a better tracking mechanism in place to ensure that those costs are true flow-through. So you'll see that both on the revenue and the expense side. There is a slight increase there, and also for our balancing pool revenue, and that is based on Kevin Phillips' latest review of the trends and the projected rates that will be potentially approved for boards. So the next item I want to bring your attention to is on the next page, and it's under the workers' compensation account, a reduction in that expense of $8,496, and that is a premium reduction due to our safety program, and we had a couple of fairly substantial compensation claims that have now come off our record. We were able to have a reduction in those premiums this year by that amount. The next one is $11,000 increase to the office general and telephone expense. That one, again, I just wanted to bring your attention to that because we reallocated some costs of office furniture, which isn't capitalized, so it was moved from capital into the operational side. But we also have included in there $1,000 for a telephone dial-out system, and that's related to the communication side of our, our business, and specifically for emergency purposes. We will be able to register phone numbers within that system that I can actually, or authorized personnel can record a digital message, and it could be sent immediately to all of those numbers with the push of a button. So for instance, if, it would only be used in extreme circumstances. I don't want anyone to think that we're going to use this for any kind of marketing or any other purpose other than urgency situations. So let's say we had to shut the water off to the entire town. It's an emergency, our main line is, is broke. It would enable us to instantaneously get that message out to people, and we can do it a couple of different ways. We can either just register all the in-town phone numbers, but we can also have people register for cellphones or any other number that wouldn't necessarily be a 653 within our boundaries. So I think that's a great opportunity, and it's, it'll be $1,000 a year, but I think it's well worth it.
Marian, I would imagine a lot of people in town do not have their landline, they only have a cellphone, and you may not know that, the cellphone number. So I was wondering, when we send a taxation paper envelope, is it possible to maybe have something inside that, or it's already loaded?
Yeah, with the tax notices, we kind of are on that brink every year.
Just avoid too much.
For postage and what it's going to cost us additional. So once we have the system in place, we will, we will find a way to communicate that and have people register their numbers with us, so, okay?
A lot of people with cellphones.
Again, I'm jumping through a lot of this because you had all this information in front of you, and I hope you've had an opportunity to review it, but there, like I said, there was some I really wanted to draw your attention to. The next one is over, sorry, three more pages, two more pages.
Can you just ask, tell me what the word rounding means?
What is rounding of from a dollar to $2?
Okay, so it's just?
Yeah.
It's just?
Because in some of these...
Rounding mathematically.
In some of these accounts, we will have 15, 20 items that are listed within that account.
Okay, so there are a few dollars, few cents.
So if we change one by a dollar here and one by 50 cents there, or $2 there, it'll round it.
Got you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, the next one I want to draw your attention to is account number 242501, and that's a sanitary sewer collection, no, sanitary sewer wage, 242100. That is reduced by $31,892, and there's a couple of other accounts in here that are wage-related, that we have reduced the wages, and this is a substantial impact on our budget, because this year we have a few very major projects, for instance, the sanitary sewer trunking, the electrical upgrade, and the, there's a water project that our staff is actually doing the work for. So every year, we try not to double-budget labor, so we will adjust the labor accounts to accommodate for those capital projects, but this year, because it's a substantial cost in our capital budget, it actually enabled us to reduce wages on the operational side by approximately $180,000. So when you look at the bottom line of this budget and how we're able to still come to a balanced budget even with the cuts in some of the other areas, that's the biggest reason why, because we made sure that we were not double-dipping for wages, okay? That's not always going to happen because we don't always have those large capital projects, but this year we did, so, okay. The next item is, four more pages, to account number 272762. Now, this is a recommendation that administration is making.
Which one?
It's 272762, which is Recreation Transfer to Reserves. One of the concerns I had as we were looking at trying to balance the budget was, if we were to simply balance the budget on the back of not operating the pool this year, what are we going to do in 2014? So my recommendation is, we looked at, there's still some costs associated with pool as far as wages, and, you know, the building is still there, so there's some operational costs. What I'm recommending is the net pool operating expense that we will be saving this year due to it not being closed is $36,000, or not being open, I'm sorry, is $36,000, and I'm recommending that that might be reserved. So it still shows as an expense on the, on the budget. Now, that's taking into account the revenue and all of that, so it's a net cost to the town of $16,000. So that's one thing I want council to be aware of. The next is the $12,500 for Grants General, and that was added as per the council motion for the donation to the Health Foundation. The last item on the, the expense side of things is Transfer to Reserves. We reduced that golf transfer by $5,000, and again, that was an offset to the revenue side to accommodate that motion of council. So I want to jump in now to the capital side of things. The Infrastructure Provincial Grant was reduced by $166,578, and that was due to the reduction of the MSI capital, as well as our water wastewater grant that there was a, there was a reduction in the provincial funding for that, and so we're anticipating that our project that we have in there will not be approved for this year because their, their funding was cut by 52%, I believe, and so in speaking with their grant people, they said, you know, the ones that are already either in progress or were sort of first on the waiting list will be the projects that will be funded first. Ours will stay on the books. At such time as the funding becomes available, then they will, they will fund that through grant. And that is for our UV treatment. It was $158,000, I believe, was the amount. So we have, we've reallocated some capital reserve money and some MSI money. We've kind of moved some things around so that we don't jeopardize that funding in the future, because if we fund it through MSI right now, then we don't qualify for the water wastewater. So we're going to pay for it this year, we're still going to do the project, pay for it out of our capital, so town-funded capital projects, and then in the future, we will still qualify for the grant once it's approved. They've, they've assured us that if the money, the budget stays in place, that they will fund it at some point in time because it is a qualifying project. The next is an addition to the Infrastructure Federal, and that's $258,404, and that was just the addition of the CIF grant that we received from the federal government for the pool renovations. The next is a reduction of $3,000 on the miscellaneous capital revenue. We had a truck that we were, in our fleet, that we were disposing at this year to replace another truck, and we've now been informed that that funding is probably going to be about $3,000 less than what we anticipated on the disposal of that vehicle. Street Improvement Grant, we added $7,350 there, and that's just to cover the cost of the curb and gutter project on First Street East in front of the Southwest Concrete where our sanitary sewer went through last year. The next is revenue to the contributed assets, $125,000. That's the in-kind contribution for the pool from the county, so we have to show that as a contributed asset because it's not cash. From reserves, capital, that was increased by $147,629. The electrical was increased based on the balancing pool credit. We're anticipating that will be a little bit more than what we had originally projected, but that's also a flow-through because we reserve it as well, so it didn't change our net revenue. And then the pool reserve was reduced so that some could be used in 2014, and then we had an increase in funding that was allocated from projects from 2012 that are now going to be completed in 2013. So the net of that was an increase of $147,000. Council-approved capital expenditures, I'm going to go back to that in a minute, okay? Let's jump down to the Capital Sidewalk Replacement Expense is $20,000, and that's due to the curb and gutter on First Street. We had the revenue on the, or a portion of the revenue came from the Street Improvement Grant that we talked about earlier. There's a couple of projects there that are carryforwards from 2012 that I'm not going to speak to because they, they just continue to be approved and carried forward until we complete them, and that's on the Atkins Development that was talked about tonight. The Water Capital, we decreased that expense by $121,340, and there was a water project in there. We were looking at doing an area down at Fifth Avenue East, and due to some service concerns that we have on Fifth, Fourth Avenue West, and the construction of the new school, the elementary school, and the electrical system that we're putting in up there, we need to trench across the road there, we thought, that's, that's an old, it's not cast iron, it's AC. Yeah, AC. We need to replace it, so we thought, you know what, well, all that project is taking place, let's get that water line replaced, we can pave that street, everything's taken care of when the new school is done. So we just moved it from Fifth to there, but there was some cost savings there.
Marian, can I ask you, what was going to be done on that Fifth? Wasn't a change of?
It was a looping of the, of some old water line down in front of Keith.
I remember. You're right.
Did you see some kind of lift station there, or pump station there?
Yeah.
Just dead ends there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, and there water pools there.
It's, it was just, yeah, it was just a matter of looping, so it's not a concern. We have some new swale and some curb and stuff in there, but we thought, let's not rip that up. It's not a concern. It was just kind of one of the projects that's on our to-do list over time.
You've got three or four items in here for Atkins property.
Yeah.
Atkins doesn't have approval yet from the government to go ahead with that project. Are we going to spend the money before he gets approval?
No, we carry this forward. This has been approved probably three years ago in budget, and because he's not moving forward, we just continue to carry it from year to year. It's, it's not impacting our budget because it was already budgeted three years ago, and we're just bringing it forward here. The next change is $4,500 reduction in the garbage capital. We were able to purchase two refurbished bins this year instead of two new bins, and so that has saved us substantially in that $4,500 build. The next is a reduction in the parks capital, $7,889, and that's the walker mower. We've been able to get that amount on a trade-ins of our old mower, so that's reduced the price there. And then the pool capital is $30,000 increase, and again, that's just balancing out the allocation between 2013 and 2014. It's not changing the budget amount overall. The next, last one I want to talk about here before I go back, is the light capital, and they, they were able to purchase some stringing equipment. Now, the stringing equipment is when they're building a new system and they're running lines between poles and stuff, so it's a piece of equipment that allows them to do that without hand pulling it. And the cost of that was $11,000 less than they anticipated, and then... And the cost of that was eleven thousand dollars less than they anticipated, and then there was some carryforward for the Atkins, so the net was a nineteen thousand dollar increase. Now, I want to go back the page before under council-approved capital, which is two-one-two-seven-six-four. We have in there eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. What has happened with this budget? The net impact was actually a surplus of eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. But we are using all of our capitalization money, and we're using a substantial amount of our reserve money this year. Most of it is pool. If we look at the net impact on reserves, let me just get my sheet here, sorry. The closing balance of December 2012 is one point nine six one one oh six. With the transfers for 2013 out and then back in, the net will be one point three nine eight million. A large portion of that, of course, is related to the pool because we've been reserving money for that. But land sales, we actually have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there this year that we're projecting in this budget to use for the west industrial land development of the infrastructure up there. So, if we do develop that land and it sells, we will be able to replenish our land reserve account. But right now, we don't have projected any sale of that land. So, with that, what administration is recommending is that that eighty thousand dollar surplus on the budget, we put it into an account called council-approved capital, and that is to give us a bit of a cushion moving forward. If something comes up this year, we don't have, we don't want to continue to use all the reserves down to zero. So, we're suggesting that we have a bit of a slush fund of some kind for capital projects, but they would have to be approved by council. If we don't use them, then we can transfer that back into land reserves at the end of the year, okay? Also, we need to discuss maybe a little more as we move through the year, as to whether we're going to move forward with that industrial infrastructure there.
We'll talk about that over the next week.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda next week. So, that's what that eighty thousand is. But what I want to draw your attention to then is, with this budget, we tried very hard, if you remember in December of 2012, we had a reduction of approximately thirty-plus thousand dollars in the tax revenue that we would receive. We tried very hard to keep that goal in mind. So from your budget that you approved December 2012, to today's budget that we're recommending council-approved, there is an additional tax revenue of only fifteen hundred dollars. And that fifteen hundred dollars is simply because when we're calculating mill rate, that's how it worked out. That's the tax revenue that we would receive from that mill rate. It's very hard on that assessment to reduce that by fifteen hundred and come to the same amount. So, the budget that's before you tonight actually is a reduction from the 2012 tax revenue of thirty thousand dollars, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, this budget is very, we've worked very hard to bring it into line for council.
Marian, this budget is a very lean budget, as far as I can see. I have a question for you. I appreciate lean budgets, but also know that there is a certain inflationary factor that we cannot discount because no mayor is going to come and bite us. So, I am wondering, what is the net impact on average over, because of the assessment, now that you know? What is the impact?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that next, okay? Even though you say it's a lean budget, I would agree it's a lean budget, we've worked very hard at being accountable for our spending in every single account that we have. But with that being said, we've also tried to be realistic in this budget. That's why our recommendation tonight to you is that we reserve the thirty-six thousand dollar net expense for pool, so that it's not just simply, I guess, smoke and mirrors sort of idea, right? That, you know, oh, we don't have the pool this year, let's just cut all those expenses. And also, the eighty thousand dollars that potentially could be a surplus that we could reduce taxes for, but it is a lean budget, and there isn't a lot of money there for unexpected expenses that I think we have to have some room there to move. So, if you look at your budget sheets, is it food? Do you want to, do you want to just see?
Are you even going to the mill rate next?
Sure.
Okay, so let's see, have you been going to the mill rate?
Okay.
Move to food rate.
Sure.
Okay. Turn on to this table back there.
Sure. All right. So.
Let me give you all live here again.
Can I breathe?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on to the mill rate now. The first sheets that you have in front of you are the, up at the top right-hand corner, it says the mill rate matches the present budget, okay?
Which sheet are we talking about?
These sheets.
Okay, thanks.
Looks like this that I put in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the mill rate proposed to match the budget that I've just presented to you, in 2013, the residential mill rate would drop to seven point four nine one two from 2012, which was seven point five five five.
It has dropped four years on the roll then?
The non-residential mill rate would drop from thirteen point three three nine to thirteen point one three two two. Now, the one thing to keep in mind is that the school mill rate will impact the overall rate, okay? So with the school mill rate included, the combined rate would be ten point four two eight two for residential, which is up from ten point one six nine four. And so that's an increase of two point five four percent, but again, that is due to the school requisition. And the non-residential would drop from seventeen point one zero nine nine to seventeen point zero nine eight four, which is a drop of point zero seven percent. The next page there shows you for the residential mill rate, the impact to residential properties, we took, this is the comparative properties that we use on an annual basis. So that ranges from, what, say, six dollars and nine, eight dollars and ninety-seven cents is the highest, to a reduction of eleven dollars and three cents. There is one anomaly there, it's the third one down, rule number one three three one, it's in red. The reason that one is increasing is because there was a substantial increase in that assessment, which just happens to be mine.
It just happens to be yours.
Just happens to be mine. So overall, average increase is point eight seven percent, so less than one percent on average. That's on residential. Non-residential, again, you know, it ranges from seventy-nine dollar increase to a four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollar decrease on those ones that we've used on an annual basis. A reduction of one point eight nine percent in the non-residential on average. Now, the average is a bit difficult because we have some, we have some properties that are fairly substantial, like the law of laws, you know, the extra foods and those kind of things, that kind of skews the average a bit, so you may not see totally the one point eight nine percent decrease, but I think the message is that, you know, there will be, if it's not the same, probably a bit of decrease. So with that, that is based on the budget that we just presented to you. I asked Noel to do a few other options for me, just to give council an idea of where we might be if we were to look at other options. So, the first option is using the mill rate that was in 2012, so not changing the mill rate at all, just simply allocating it to the new assessment. That would bring us an additional twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars in tax revenue, not a substantial amount. It affects the average residential property with eleven dollars and one cent increase, and it affects the average non-residential property with forty-three dollars and seventy-nine cent increase.
Marian, just for my own benefit, that would create a difference in rate of how much, the composite rate, do you have an idea?
What do you mean by the composite rate?
Well, when you include the non-residential, the school, et cetera.
So with last year's?
Oh, yeah, okay, so I can't see it, yeah. It was ten?
So using the same municipal rate as last year, it would increase the residential by three point one seven percent, and the non-residential by one point one four, okay?
Okay, that's right, I was trying to say.
Those are percentage change in total mill rate from the previous year is there on your sheet. It is the fourth column from the right.
Yeah.
Okay? So that was one option that I had to look at. The second option was, as I said, we have about an eighty thousand dollar surplus that we're recommending go to a council capital-approved account. But I said, let's say we work from a forty thousand dollar surplus, let's take forty thousand off. So the net impact of that was residential was an increase of one point two six percent, the non-residential a decrease of point eight three percent. So, it would give us forty thousand dollars less in municipal tax revenue, so that means we would only have forty thousand dollar council capital-approved. It affects our average residential by twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents, and the average non-residential by twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. If you look at the last option, it was saying, let's have a balanced budget and eliminate the eighty thousand dollar surplus. That means residential, this is combined again, remember, so what happens here is that we would be absorbing the major portion of the school tax through our municipal fund. So the residential would be point zero two percent reduction, and non-residential is one point five nine percent reduction. The impact on residential would be forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents savings, of course, and the average non-residential is fifty-five twenty-two savings. And that is the same on the previous option, those are both savings, that impact twenty-two sixty-two and twenty-seven seventy. So, again, the recommendation from administration is that we continue to have, that we continue to have wise management of our funds, but that we don't get into a situation where we're having to cut services or balancing other requisitions on backs of municipal services. As we said, it's a very tight budget, we think that it's wise to have a little bit of cushion there, and you understand eighty thousand dollars can be spent in the blink of an eye on one capital project that may come up. So, that is our recommendation. We are still, I believe, accomplishing the goal of council to keep taxes in line. One of the other things that we still haven't accomplished to date, and I've put in front of you, the statement of operations for all of our utilities. These are based, the 2013 projections are based on the budget that was put before you tonight. From that, you can see that our waste management and our electrical are of cost recovery projections for 2013, but our water and sanitary wastewater are not yet. As we move to that cost recovery, we will continue to see the impact on our tax revenue requirements because, and also, we will see the impact on the compliance on other government transfers. I'm glad that council made that move a couple of years ago to take that approach, to become less reliant on government transfers, because already this year, we're seeing about a two-hundred-and-sixty to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollar impact simply on government transfers. So, the recommendation is there in front of you, if you have any questions on the large tournaments.
Mr. Chairman has got a comment. Annually, we agonize over our budget, our spending, how much tax we lose. I just want to remind each of us that, sit on boards who have requisition power, school levy, we can't say anything about that. I think we need to be more vigilant, or at least, our voice needs to be heard, for example, Chief Mountain Solid Waste has the power to increase what they charge us, ORSC has the power to increase what they charge us, Homes for the Agent has the power to increase what they charge us, as does ambulance, sorry, fire. I think we need to ask the hard questions every time those organizations requisition. They have to justify, they have to make cuts because we have to make cuts. And I don't think we can afford to lose sight of that principle. And so hopefully, as we go to those, I think I listed four, where we, you know, they're typically regional boards and regional committees and so forth. We need to insist that because we have to make cuts, they need to make cuts. And I just hope that we would all be able to not lose sight of that.
Mayor Scott, it's a point well taken. What I realize that this is something that needs to be also communicated at the mayor and reef vote, for those mayor and reef to send a message back to the councillor, to all the councillors that are sitting on those boards, to have the same message. Because it's very easy for someone who is deep in somebody else's pocket to say, I need this, I need that, and I need the other, but I can't be the only voice, always voicing oppositional. We need all the voices there, and I think Mayor and Reef Caucus is probably the place where that message needs to be really well identified in order to bring it down to all councils that are involved. really well identified in order to bring it down to all councils that are involved. Otherwise, we can't move.
If I could respond, Counselor Cronin. For example, today, the four mayors, Cardston, McGrath, and Sterling, had our quarterly meeting, and we discussed Chief Mountain Solid Waste. And they're talking about getting a high hole. And you know, you can't have a yard full of equipment just because maybe for a few hours a month. You need a high hole. You go and contract some of these services, some of this work with private contractors because you can't afford to sit and have it rust for 363 days a year when we maybe only need it two days a year. And so that's just an example that when we go to that organization, we need to make sure, can you justify buying a high hole?
Exactly right.
And ambulance or the fire authority could be the same thing, ORSC, same thing, and Home for the Agent as well. Because the buck stops here. Our only choice is to pass it on to the ultimate taxpayer, you and I.
I think we need to keep in mind.
Counselor, just a, we need a motion to extend.
I'll make a motion that we extend by, what, 20 minutes?
Yeah, I hope so. Okay, 20 minutes till 7:00.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I'm in favor. I think we need to keep in mind what constitute our population. And a lot of our people are on limited incomes, and it's a fixed income. And it makes it difficult for them to sustain any significant increases in their spending and all that kind of things. So I want to compliment our professional staff on this budget.
No kidding?
I think they've done a super job.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I concur. Our staff has worked very hard, and every department is on site with this. It's not, we didn't have to go in and say, we're cutting. They really did sit down and they did some evaluation of their services and how they could do it more efficiently. So thank you, Council, I appreciate that.
And then one more comment. We don't have unlimited funds to operate with. We have restricted funds, so we have to operate within what we can collect and what people can afford to pay.
Okay, and I concur. I think Marion and the staff have done an awesome, excellent job, and I appreciate all the hard work they do. It's probably never a fun time either from, I'm sure, so. But I think what we need is a motion to recommend the mail rate for 2013. Counselor Cronin?
Personally, looking at all the options, I think the wisest option is the first option, which is the option that you recommended, the very first one. It represents an increase, combined increase of 2.45 percent if I heard you well, Marion. And I honestly think that that is a reasonable increase. I know it's an average, some will be hit more than others, but as an average, it's a very, very lean increase. And so my recommendation to council would be that we approve this budget with a mail rate of 10.4282 on residential and 17.0984 for non-residential.
Okay, motion for recommendation for, can I call that option one, I guess?
Yeah, can I just speak to that? I think one of the important messages, though, to the public is the municipal mail rate has reduced.
But the assessment has gone up.
Well, no, the increase is totally subject to the school requisition that we don't have any control over. So we continue to try to reduce the municipal portion, but we can't absorb all of it without having an impact on municipal services.
I'm wondering if there will be possibly a communication via regarding that notion. Two years ago, we had written something regarding assessment, mail rate, taxation, maybe we could.
Actually, if I might, the communication piece that we put out about a month or so ago, once we knew about the cuts to.
I remember that.
We've had a lot of compliments on that, but thank you for informances to these implications.
Right.
Okay, there will be a mention, Mr. Chairman, there will be a mention in the mayor's message to town of our holding our spending in check. And the increases are because of provincial cutbacks and increased in school levy. There'll be just brief mention of that. And maybe we won't even, I think we'll probably try to.
Okay, so is there any further questions? Okay, call the question all in favor, Bob Schloss. Okay, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. We will then have the mail rate bylaw presented for Tuesday night, or will require all three of them at my.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. 7B, bylaw 1559, West Area Structure Plan Menu, that's for Shelley and Darren Shaw, who want to eliminate a lane that is on some of their properties, or one of the lanes that shows on the West Area Structure Plan, they want to eliminate that so they can build a house there, so. So just so we know that the structure plan that's in place right now is just kind of a recommended what the area could look like, so it's not as significant important that that lane stay there. They've also sent a letter in from their neighbors to the north there that have no problem with removing the lane and building on that property.
Could we possibly get that on the overhead somehow?
There's a, there's a map in your agenda that.
Yes.
On the.
I'll give you a bit of a briefing. In the West Area Structure Plan, the areas were designed with laneways. And so because this is considered a significant change to the West Area Structure Plan, it requires an amendment to the bylaw. At that time, there was some discussion about perhaps bringing electrical services and those types of things down the lane. That requires basically running power in two locations because you've still got to have streetlights and all of that. So the current practice is that we service from the front. Shelley, when she made this presentation, understands that with the elimination of the lane, it means that they'll have to have some transformers in the front and things like that that are already existing throughout town. So we also asked her to speak to the neighbors that could potentially be impacted by it, which is the property owners to the north. The proposal is only for this one block, that the proposed lane, now please understand it is not a subdivided parcel at this point, but the proposed lane would not be subdivided in the future, which would allow them to place their home on a larger lot and still have these setbacks as required.
So is the lot are looking at the whole parcel, the double parcel? Is that what they're looking at?
Yes. Yeah, they're also proposing that for part of that area, that perhaps they don't go to the smaller residential lots, that they look at it as.
A large lot.
Combine some of those properties to a larger lots.
Right. Okay.
On this deal agreement, is that the actual roots where they propose gas lines in the water and sewer, or would they go up 8th Street? Because if the gas.
That'll be a connection line, and they understand that they won't be extending the main at this point, they'll just put a connection in, but they also understand and will be written into the development agreement that that will be abandoned in the future when the mains are extended.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wondered, because it goes through the property.
Yes, it does.
But they own that property, so right now it's okay, as long as it's a service line, and they agree that it will be abandoned, and they fully understand that.
Okay, is that in writing, Mary, in some?
It will be.
Okay. So what's the, there's a place just to the right of where their proposed houses, it's got some little scratches through the lines. Is that a property, I'm just wondering what that means, I don't know.
The dotted lines?
No, on my.
Those four little squigglies.
There's a, there's a, an area that's just been penned, a line and.
No, I think, I think when they originally drew this out, she was saying, well, maybe we could put a lane this way or whatever, and it just didn't get erased when the proposal was put forward.
So that doesn't have any meaning?
Because it's got lines through it now, I think, you know, it's got no meaning.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe we'll, maybe we'll look for a motion to recommend to council that we maybe offer an amendment, amended bylaw for 1559C.
I would so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We will bring the bylaw forward on Tuesday for first reading, and then on May 28th, we will go through the public hearing process for that.
Okay. So all on paper of the motion for first reading?
To recommend it, Council.
To recommend it, Council, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, Marion, you're doing such a good job up there.
Who do you like to hear from?
We'll talk about the I don't see their water wastewater with the South Water Users Co-op.
Okay. After the water conveyance agreement was signed with the county, we've talked a bit about how are we going to deal with the existing lines in the county that are currently served by the town. And so Murray's been working with the Water Co-op, and him and I have been in discussions. He's also presented this to his council. But basically, it's to enter into a new agreement with Cardston County with regards to the South Water Users Co-op. The information that's presented there in front of you is basically, right now, we have a meter at the county shop, and the individual properties are not metered. So we just bill on that meter at the county shop, and then they bill their residents a portion of that, or the people that are connected. So the recommendation is that the co-op would install a meter on each of the residence lines, that the town would continue to supply our water license for the current users. So right now, there's ten, I believe, that are signed. We have a letter that we sent to the county a couple of years ago that said we agreed based on the original agreement that there could be two more connections to that. One was for Steve Quentin, and the other one was for Gary Woodard. So we've talked a little bit about the maximum use. In the original agreement, it, back in 1986, the environment around water use was much different than it is today. And that agreement was signed to allow for domestic use up to 300,000 gallons per user. That calculates out to 1,135 cubic meters per year, or 94.58 cubic meters per month, which is a substantial amount of water. So that is still a bidding negotiations. Murray and I have talked about this 36 cubic meters. The county council feels that perhaps we need to consider still supplying the same amount that we agreed to in 1986. I'm not sure I support that, like I said, because the environment is different now than it was in 1986. For domestic use, 95 cubic meters a month is a substantial amount of water. So we will continue discussions there if that's council's wishes. The next item would be that any water over that amount, whatever's negotiated there, would come out of the county water license. So if they have any additional users, or there's anything above that, that it would have to be allocated through their licensing. Any new users must contact the county and make arrangements with them for connection. It would no longer be through the town. The county would provide the consumption volumes for all users to the town so that we would have accurate records. And they would provide the consumption volumes for the current users as well, so not only who's on the line now, but the future users as well. The town would bill Cardston County for all of the water that's treated, and the rate would be determined at the start of each year based on our utility bylaw. And they would allow, of course, in their, the ability for a small profit margin. And that percentage would have to be determined as part of the agreement as well. Cardston County would pay the town and then invoice the Water Co-op for their consumption. So we would have one invoice, as we do now. The county would test the water for the co-op. Once a line leaves a distribution system, there's a requirement for testing to ensure that the chlorine levels and all of that are still there. The co-op would be assigned to the distribution license that the county has, and an agreement would be signed between the town and the county to clarify all of this. The old water agreement that's between the town and the county for the South Water Co-op will be superseded by the new agreement. So we're looking for support in principle of these parameters, and would continue to negotiate and bring a formal agreement back to council.
Okay, so Marion, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's have our motion to recommend.
Well, I will put a motion forward in principle to recommend a new MOU between the county and a town regarding the allocation of water.
Self users.
To, so the co-op, the South Water User Co-op, and not part of that motion, but I really think it's important that we bring ourselves to the 21st century regarding that notion of water conservation.
Okay.
Okay, so you've got a motion to recommend from.
I think that should be part of the motion, really.
Okay, maybe you want to put it through the motion.
The consumption needs to be addressed or something to affect, so that we have that direction to take back.
Okay, well, let's put it in the motion then to.
Go on, agree.
Mr. Chairman, I am very curious if we have any information as to actual consumptions. Now, we probably don't have any way to get that information on a resident-by-resident basis, but I would be curious.
We have records of what the annual, or what the monthly and annual use is because we have one metered site, but I couldn't tell you what that is for individuals.
But we could break that down to get a mean or an average.
Well, yeah.
And I think that would be, I think that would be informative, plus, it's still a question as to how much treated water they're using for their livestock. And it all goes to the objective of this motion, to send the message that their consumption needs to be.
Needs to be reduced.
Reduced, and if they exceed whatever is agreed to.
It costs them.
Then it's going to cost them. Because if we have to put similar limits on our users here in Cardston, and we have, then there's no reason why other users that are on our system, in spite of agreements that have been around for some time, that's got to change. And so that's at the heart of this motion.
Yeah. The only difficulty is that we're more urban than more rural, right? So we have to kind of, kind of factor that in somewhere.
And I think there's a lesson to be learned as well, is when we're entering into agreements, we have to consider future implications, you know, to entering to an agreement that says we will allocate you X cubic meters at X rate, perhaps it's not.
The wise way to go.
Looking into the future as to the impact of that.
Okay, Counselor.
If we're, excuse me, if we're going to get to the point where we're full cost recovery, can we make this a limited agreement so when we make the adjustments to our rates, that will be acceptable to them?
Well, I think the intent of the agreement, Counselor, is that the rates would be based on our annual approval. So as we amend rates, the agreement would coincide with those rates, yeah.
That's what's in the MOU right there.
Okay, so you've got a motion on the table. Any more questions? No? Okay, all in favor to motion recommend? Okay, any opposed?
No.
Okay.
We need a motion to extend again.
Okay, motion to extend for 7:30.
We'll hope for 7:30.
Yeah, we might make it, we might make it.
Okay, 7:30, okay, all in favor? Okay, moving forward, Planning and Development, Municipal Development Plan Committee, we have members at large. What they're looking for is two members of council to sit on that board there.
Did you say you were going to appoint them?
Did you say you were going to appoint them?
The, the Municipal Development Plan Committee.
Yeah, it's been discussed at council, but no one's been appointed at this point, so we need two councillors to appoint them.
So if anyone wants to, Mayor's, he's offering already?
I think Mayor had said he would appoint whoever.
It makes, it makes good sense that obviously we need to choose among who's going to come back and be in the election process again, September, October. And that might mean a change or two, but between now and then, uh, there's only three that we have a good indication of seeking reelection.
Yeah, this is, I, yeah, I think this isn't, uh, a long-term committee, it's just kind of like an ad hoc committee that will probably only be in place and, and have meetings at certain times along, uh, along the line. So I mean, you know, maybe six months, you know, before then you can, you know, have, what it is, development planning, so they look at the future of Cardston should look like that's what this group is kind of put forward to. So I mean, within the next six months, I don't know if, if it can be accomplished in that period of time.
No, I don't, because we've got summer in there, which really puts a...
It puts in a nine-months, yeah.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask administration, what's your, what did we decide sort of as a result of our discussions about this at the retreat, I think is when we discussed it? Was council amenable to the mayor appointing those two members?
Well, there was no decision made at that time. Everyone was willing to sit on the committee, but we had to limit that, because the decision was we would have more at-large members than council members. But I don't, I don't think it hurts at this point to appoint two councillors that would be willing to see it through to the end process. We don't necessarily need to change, even if you're not on council in the next term, as long as you're prepared to see it through to its completion as a committee member, which could be a year from now, right? By the time you go through public consultation process and stuff.
And then after the election, you know, they could always still come in, you know, and ask for another couple of councillors, or some new councillors to, to sit on that committee as well, so...
But if I could, Mr. Chairman, in the event, let's say that the two are selected from this council and sit on the committee, and let's say that they don't get reelected, or something happens, then we have five, plus two, plus two more, so now we've got a nine-member committee. So in, in any event, in any event, uh, I would like to move that councillors Conan and Edmonds be appointed to that committee, and, uh, I could add to that, subject to outcome of the October election, if council feels that's the way they want to word that motion.
I would recommend the two that are appointed carry on to the completion of the committee.
Yeah, if, if there's an extra two on there, it doesn't, it's not a big deal. I mean, I, I, I mean, if you've attended a lot of committee meetings and things like that, partly everybody shows up anyhow, so maybe we'd get lucky to have seven on there.
But you know, and you know what? And I probably won't be sitting at this table after the 22nd of, uh, October, anyway. But anyway, my motion is to recommend to council that councillors Conan and Edmonds be appointed.
Are they in need of, to that, or is he okay with that then?
Yeah.
Let their names be careful. Okay, so motion to recommend for councillor Conan, councillor Edmonds to sit on, uh, on the ad hoc committee of municipal develop, or sorry, Municipal Development Plan Committee, are all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under other, um, 8A, disaster funding. Marion, did you want to just quickly?
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick update. Just for council's information, we have received a portion of our disaster funding, but none on the golf course. They withheld all of the funding for the golf course. Ernie, intent, who is the engineer for the funding office, intends to be here the week of May 27th to do his onsite review, and at that time, um, his decision will be rendered. I have spoken with Dean Summerfeld, and we understand that everything's okay until, uh, the funding is received on the golf course. But the total outstanding amount right now is about $77,000. So the town is, you know, still about fifty-some thousand dollars, but is not associated with the golf course management corp, management groups invoices. So, um, we're, I just wanted to let you know that we did receive the balance of funding.
So you received $50,000, is that?
No.
No?
We received $150,000.
Okay, all right, okay, I understand what you're saying.
But there's still $77,000 outstanding.
Of which $50,000?
Would be the town's cost that we incurred.
Right.
Yeah.
So that still is quite a better difference.
Yes, yeah. So we're working with them, and Dean understands and was comfortable making that recommendation to his Ford or his group, that everything just kind of wait until we can kind of do a bit of a check exchange.
Marion, can I just ask you, is Dean the person with whom you deal now out of that group, management group? Is he the one who is now the voice for the group?
Um, I, yes, I...
For financial matter, for financial matter anyways?
Dean and Randy were, were kind of the spokespeople.
Okay.
Dean is the one that seems to be the easiest to get a hold of, and so I communicate with him on a regular basis. Um, you know, I still CC Randy on any emails and all of that as well, but...
Okay.
But Dean is the one that I talk to most, most frequently, just because he is the easiest to get a hold of.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Marion. Okay, down to correspondence, I have nine there, EUME, um, we'll kind of quickly run through these things here. They're requesting resolutions from municipalities. So if anyone has any resolution, I'd want to put forward to deadlines, June 30th, 2013. Uh, next is Blood Tribe Economic Development.
It's an invitation.
Development invitation, yeah, and that's, uh...
That's a, that's a motion.
That's a public meeting in open house, which is Wednesday, May 15th, 1:00 to 6:00 PM, in the standoff.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I will be asking council a week from today, that's the EVO of this meeting. If you don't know already, would, can I, want to have an idea who's clinical?
I think I would like to do...
I think I'll go, I don't know whether I want to stay for four hours or five minutes.
Marion, that's a good question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I, I just don't think that this is something that needs to be on a second agenda, so if the decision could be made tonight, it'd be great, rather than having to put it on another agenda. But it is just a drop-in, it's not something that you're expected to see for four or five hours.
I think personally, I would like to go, because we have not had a formal meeting with that new council, and I think to create, uh, carry on creating their bridging, I think it would be a nice, nice thing to come to Milton, essentially for that purpose. There we go.
Okay, so councillor Conan, anybody else want to?
I, I plan to go.
I mean, I might not stay the whole time.
The mayor's planning going, councillor Creed?
I, I think I could go, I just, I'm just trying to clarify, this isn't something that came out before, that they only invited a couple of people to, is it, this is a, this is a different event?
No, this is open house, and it, excuse me, it was mentioned at the meeting last week...
That we had, yeah.
That was the one that you want.
And at that meeting, councillors Edmonds, Conan, myself were there. But it's not limited, it is not limited.
I'll probably go, I think.
I hope, you know, not that protocol is a big issue, but I would really, really hope that a handful of their councillors will be there. I'm guessing they will, I hope they will be there.
And this, this is just a drop-in, basically, or you don't have to be there the whole time, just you can hop in sometime and...
You know, if you look at the bottom of the, uh, of that pamphlet, what it says, it says, meet the councillor on the Economic Pillar Committee and Department and Entity Staff. In other words, you have a chance, they have about four of them assigned, I think, to that, to that committee, and I think that's an interesting thing for us to know a little bit what's going on with them, because there's a lot going on, on the Blood Tribe reserve right now.
Okay, so moving on there, C, anyone that wants to go, the premier's prayer breakfast is welcome to do so. D, the Alzheimer's Society is having a walk, um, that's going to be, is it, it's going to start at the Lions Park, June 22nd, 10 o'clock, they're looking for someone from council to go and give a, a two-minute, uh, speech.
I think that would be a wonderful thing for the FCS's representative.
Anybody you want to vote for that?
FCS's representative, I might forget them.
Talks with them.
Good one. Does anyone want to put their name for it for...
22nd of June, what time?
Uh, was it there, 10 o'clock AM?
Which day is that, do you know?
Since the Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we've got a week or two to think about this, to see who's got a free schedule.
You know, okay, cool.
Yeah, and I'm not...
I'll probably forget, so... Sure. Okay, let's go on to Conservative Party, anyone want to go, often with the Conservatives?
Oh, yells.
Okay, and, uh, 9F, Alberta Government, it's a program that they've created for people over 65 years of age, where they can defer their property tax payment.
Take it off their house price when they sell it off.
Take it off their house when they sell it off.
Well, you know, it's a program that exists in BC for, has existed in BC for a long time, and a lot of people take advantage of it. It allows them to not worry about their taxes and their estate worry about it. Spot it?
Don't give anything to the kids.
Move to it, Jerry.
Okay, did you want to speak to Gordon?
Oh, sorry, yes, we may need to.
Did you want, or no? Do you want to do that another?
Um...
We can do that another.
Well, I think that that needs a little bit of further discussion.
Yeah, I think so.
Um, just a couple of things, I guess, in response, is, we do have a development agreement with Gordon, which outlines responsibilities, and that was done as part of the subdivision process. And we also have a sale agreement that was very specific about who would be responsible for what. One of the concerns I have administratively, and councillor Conan alluded to this earlier, is, um, we are at a cost recovery with our electrical system, but that took some time to get there, and it took some effort on behalf of council to recognize, um, the, the true cost of operating that utility. For us to implement a, an investment component with that is a little different, I think, than Florida Seratco, that has a larger customer base. We have 1,500 customers on, or approximately on our electrical utility, and to divide that out amongst that many customers, because it would have to be included in rate structure, it could have a significant impact. So that's something that council may want to consider. The other thing is with the looping, um, there is some background information there. I apologize, we didn't have this ahead of time, but, uh, as Gordon said, his, his sister passed away, so he was away, and, but there's some background information there as well from Albert Tagle, who's with Associated Engineering, and in regards to why we, we would like to see them leave that system, because there is a risk that's associated with that. Now, maybe we can mitigate that risk, and, and if council wants us to look at that negotiation with Gordon, he did, um, say that perhaps they could provide the staffing for the flushing, if that was required. I don't know what the implications of that are, whether it has to be certified people or not, so we would have to look into that. But, um, we'll put it back on the agenda for Tuesday, but those are just some things I want council to think about, and, and review Albert's comments there as well, and we'll try and bring some details about the development agreement and what was agreed to way back when. Um, I apologize, I won't be here Tuesday, I'm away at a conference, um, so Jeff will handle that, I'm like, yeah, so I'm sure he's fully capable of doing it, all right?
What the hell, sorry, Marion. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. See how power goes to its head that fast?
I know, just like...
You know, it's dead for, do you see how much time is due?
Like this wasn't, it's supposed to be out here by 6:00.
All right, so...
Not able to see where we eat.
Want to give you all the live here again?
Can I speak to you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on to the mail rate now. The first sheets that you have in front of you are the, up at the top right hand corner, it says the mail rate matches the present budget, okay?
Which sheet are we talking about, Mary?
These, these sheets.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like this that I put in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. So the mail rate, um, proposed to match the budget that I've just presented to you, in 2013, the residential mail rate would drop to 7.4912 from 2012, which was 7.555.
It has dropped four years on the road then?
The non-residential mail rate would drop from 1, 13.339 to 13.1322. Now, the one thing to keep in mind is that the school mail rate will impact the overall rate, okay? So with the school mail rate included, the combined rate would be 10.4282 for residential, which is up from 10.1694. And so that's an increase of 2.54 percent, but again, that is due to the school requisition. Um, and the non-residential would drop from 17.1099 to 17.0984, which is a drop of .07 percent. The next page there shows you, um, for the residential mail rate, the impact to residential properties, we took, this is the comparative properties that we use on an annual basis. So that ranges from, um, let's say, $6.9, $8.97 is the highest, to a reduction of $11.03. There is one anomaly there, it's the third one down, rule number 1331, it's in red. The reason that one is increasing is because there was a substantial increase in that assessment, which just happens to be mine.
It just happens to be yours.
Just happens to be mine. So overall, average increase is .87 percent, so less than 1% on average. That's on residential. Non-residential, again, um, you know, it ranges from $79 increase to a $486 decrease on those ones that we've used on an annual basis, a reduction of 1.89 percent in the non-residential on average. Now, the average is a bit difficult, because we have some, we have some properties that are fairly substantial, like the law laws, you know, the extra foods and those kind of things, that kind of skews the average a bit, so you may not see totally the, the 1.89 percent decrease, but I think the message is that, you know, there, there will be, if it's not the same, probably a bear the decrease. So with that, that is based on the budget that we just presented to you. I asked Noel to do a few other options for me, um, just to give council an idea of where we might be if we were to look at other options. So the first option is using the mail rate that was in 2012, so not changing the mail rate at all, um, just simply allocating it to, to the new assessment. That would bring us an additional $25,874 in tax revenue, not a substantial amount. That would bring us an additional $25,874 in tax revenue, not a substantial amount. It affects the average residential property with $11.01 increase, and it affects the average non-residential property with $43.79 increase.
Marion, just for my own benefit, that would create a difference in rate of how much, the composite rate, do you have an idea?
What do you mean by the composite rate?
Well, when you include the non-residential, the school, et cetera.
So, with last year's?
Oh, yeah, okay, so I can't see it yet.
Yep.
It was 10.1694.
So, using the same municipal rate as last year, it would increase the residential by 3.17% and the non-residential by 1.14, okay?
Okay, that's what I was trying to say.
Those are percentage change in total mail rate from the previous year is there on your sheet. It is the fourth column from the right.
Yeah.
Okay? So, that was one option that I had to look at. The second option was, as I said, we have about an $80,000 surplus that we're recommending go to a council capital approved account. But I said, let's say we work from a $40,000 surplus, let's take $40,000 off. So, the net impact of that was residential was an increase of 1.26%, the non-residential a decrease of .83%. So, it would give us $40,000 less in municipal tax revenue, so that means we would only have $40,000 council capital approved. It affects our average residential by $22.62 and the average non-residential by $27.78. If you look at the last option, it was saying, let's have a balanced budget and eliminate the $80,000 surplus. That means residential, this is combined again, remember, so what happens here is that we would be absorbing the major portion of the school tax through our municipal fund. So, the residential would be .02% reduction, and non-residential is 1.59% reduction. The impact on residential would be $45.35 savings, of course, and the average non-residential is $55.22 savings, and that is the same on the previous option, those are both savings, that impact $22.62 and $27.78. So, again, the recommendation from administration is that we continue to have, that we continue to have wise management of our funds, but that we don't get into a situation where we're having to cut services or balancing other requisitions on backs of municipal services. As we said, it's a very tight budget, we think that it's wise to have a little bit of cushion there, and you understand $80,000 can be spent in the blink of an eye on one capital project that may come up. So, that is our recommendation. We are still, I believe, accomplishing the goal of council to keep taxes in line. One of the other things that we still haven't accomplished to date, and I've put in front of you the statement of operations for all of our utilities, these are based, the 2013 projections are based on the budget that was put before you tonight. From that, you can see that our waste management and our electrical are at cost recovery projections for 2013, but our water and sanitary wastewater are not yet. As we move to that cost recovery, we will continue to see the impact on our tax revenue requirements, because, and also, we will see the impact on the compliance on other government transfers. I'm glad that council made that move a couple of years ago, to take that approach, to become less reliant on government transfers, because already this year, we're seeing about a $260 to $270,000 impact simply on government transfers. So, the recommendation is there in front of you, if you have any questions, we're very glad to try and answer them.
Mr. Chairman, just got a comment. Annually, we agonize over our budget, our spending, how much tax we need to pay. I just wanna remind each of us that sit on boards who have requisition power, school levy, we can't say anything about that. I think we need to be more vigilant, or at least, our voice needs to be heard, for example, Chief Mountain Solid Waste has the power to increase what they charge us, ORSC has the power to increase what they charge us, Homes for the Agent has the power to increase what they charge us, as does ambulance, sorry, fire. I think we need to ask the hard questions every time those organizations requisition. They have to justify, they have to make cuts, because we have to make cuts, and I don't think we can afford to lose sight of that principle. And so, hopefully, as we go to those, I think I listed four, where we, you know, they're typically regional boards and regional committees and so forth, we need to insist that, because we have to make cuts, they need to make cuts, and I just hope that we would all be able to not lose sight of that.
Mayor Scott, that's a point well taken. What I realize, that this is something that needs to be also communicated at the mayor and reeve vote, for those mayor and reeve to send a message back to the councillor, to all the councillors that are sitting on those boards, to have the same message, because it's very easy for someone who is deep in somebody on the cockpit to say, I need this, I need that, and then need the other, but I can't be the only voice, always voicing oppositional. We need all the voices there, and I think mayor and reeve caucus is probably the place where that message needs to be really well identified, in order to bring it down to all councils that are involved, otherwise, we can't move.
If I could respond, Councilor Conan. For example, today, the four mayors, Cardston, Raymond McGrath, and Sterling, had our quarterly meeting, and we discussed Chief Mountain Solid Waste, and they're talking about getting a high hog. And you know, you can't have a yard full of equipment just because maybe for a few hours a month, you need a high hog. You go and contract some of these services, some of this work, with private contractors, because you can't afford to sit and have it rust for 363 days a year, when we maybe only need it two days a year. And so, that's just an example, that when we go to that organization, we need to make sure, can you justify buying a high hog?
Exactly right.
And ambulance, or the fire authority could be the same thing, ORSC, same thing, and Home for the Agent as well, because the buck stops here. A normal choice is to pass it on to the ultimate taxpayer, you and I.
We need a motion to...
I think we need to keep in mind what constitutes...
Just sir, we need a motion to extend.
I'll make a motion, do we extend by, what, 20 minutes?
Yeah, I hope so. Okay, 20 minutes till 7:01?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, all in favor?
I think, I'm in favor. I think we need to keep in mind what constitute our population, and a lot of our people are on limited incomes, and it's a fixed income, and it makes it difficult for them to sustain any significant increases in their spending, and all that kind of things, so I wanna compliment our professional staff on this budget.
No kidding.
I think they've done a super job.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I concur. Our staff has worked very hard, and every department is on site with this, it's not, we didn't have to go in and say we're cutting, they really did sit down and they did some evaluation of their services, and how they could do it more efficiently, so, thank you, councillor, I appreciate that.
And one more comment, we don't have unlimited funds to operate with, we have restricted funds, so we have to operate within what we can collect and what people can afford to pay.
Okay, and I concur, I think Marion and their staff have done an awesome, excellent job, and I appreciate all the hard work they do, it's probably never a fun time of year for them, I'm sure, so, but I think what we need is a motion to recommend the mail rate for 2013. Councilor Conan?
Personally, looking at all the options, I think the wisest option is the first option, which is the option that you recommended, the very first one. It represents an increase, combined increase of 2.45%, if you, if I heard you well, Marion. And I honestly think that that is a reasonable increase. I know it's an average, some will be hit more than others, but as an average, it's a very, very lean increase, and so, my recommendation to council would be that we approve this budget with a mail rate of 10.4282 on residential and 17.0984 for non-residential.
Okay, motion for recommendation four, can I call that option one?
Yeah, can I just speak to that? I think one of the important messages, though, to the public is the municipal mail rate has reduced.
But the assessment is gonna...
Well, no, the increase is totally subject to the school requisition, that we don't have any control over.
Yes.
So, if, we continue to try to reduce the municipal portion, but we can't absorb all of it without having an impact on municipal services.
I'm wondering if there will be possibly a communication via RIA regarding that notion, two years ago, we had written something regarding assessment, mail rate, taxation, maybe we could add...
Actually, if I might, the communication piece that we put out about a month or so ago, once we knew about the cuts to...
I remember that.
We've had a lot of compliments on that, but thank you for informing us as to these implications, so...
Right.
There will be a mention, Mr. Chairman, there will be a mention in the mayor's message to town of our, of holding our spending in check, and the increases are because of provincial cutbacks and increased in school levy. There'll be just brief mention of that, and maybe we won't even, I think we'll probably try to figure it out.
Okay, so is there any further questions? Okay, call the question all in favor, of option one. Opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, we will then have the mail rate bylaw presented for Tuesday night, or will require all three of you to adopt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everything. 7B, bylaw 1559, West Area Structure Plan Amendment, that's for Shelley and Darren Shaw, who want to eliminate a lane that is on some of their properties, or one of the lanes that's, that shows on the West Area Structure Plan, they want to eliminate that so they can build a house there. So, just so we know that the structure plan that's in place right now is just kind of a recommended, what the area could look like, so it's not as significant important that that lane stay there. They've also sent a letter in from their neighbors to the north there, they have no problem with them removing the lane, building on that property.
Could we possibly get that on the overhead somehow?
There is a, there's a map in your agenda there.
Yeah.
Move you on the...
I'll give you, I'll give you a bit of a briefing on it. In the West Area Structure Plan, the areas were designed with laneways, and so, because this is considered a significant change to the West Area Structure Plan, it requires an amendment to the bylaw. At that time, there was some discussion about perhaps bringing electrical services and those types of things down the lane. That requires basically running power in two locations, because you've still gotta have streetlights and all of that, so the current practice is that we service from the front. Shelley, when she made this presentation, understands that with the elimination of the lane, it means that they'll have to have some transformers in the front and things like that, that are already existing throughout town. So, we also ask her to speak to the neighbors that could potentially be impacted by it, which is the property owners to the north. The proposal is only for this one block, that the proposed lane, now please understand it is not a subdivided parcel at this point, but the proposed lane would not be subdivided in the future, which would allow them to place their home on a larger lot and still have these setbacks as required.
So, is the lots are looking at the whole parcel, the double parcel, is that what they're looking at?
Yes. Yeah, they're also proposing that for part of that area, that perhaps they don't go to the smaller residential lots, that they look at it as a, as combined some of those properties to a larger lots.
Right, okay.
Justice.
On this, the staggering we've got, is that the actual route for the proposed gas lines and the water and sewer, or would they go up 8th Street? Because if the gas...
That'll be a connection line, and they understand that they won't be extending the main at this point, they'll just put a connection in, but they also understand, and will be written into the development agreement, that that will be abandoned in the future when the mains are extended.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wondered, because it goes through the properties, yeah?
Yes, it does.
But they own that property, so right now, it's okay, as long as it's a service line, and they agree that it will be abandoned, and they fully understand that.
Okay, is it in writing, or in something?
It will be, it will be.
So, what's the, there's a place just to the right of where the proposed houses, it's got some little scratches through the lines, is that a property, I'm just wondering what that means, I don't know.
The dotted lines?
No, on my...
There's four little squigglies.
There's a, there's a, an area that's just been penned, a line and...
No, I think, I think when they originally drew this out, she was saying, well, maybe we could put a lane this way, or whatever, and it just didn't get erased when the proposal was put forward.
So, that doesn't have any meaning?
Because it's got lines through it now, I think, no, it's got no meaning.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe we'll, maybe we'll look for a motion to recommend to council that we maybe offer an amendment, amended bylaw for 1559C?
I would so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We will bring the bylaw forward on Tuesday for first reading, and then on May 28th, we will go through the public hearing process for that.
Okay.
Okay?
So, all in paper of the motion for first reading?
To recommend, or to recommend to council?
To recommend to council, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, Marion, you're doing such a good job up there, and we'll keep you up there.
Who do you like to hear from?
And we'll talk about item C there, water wastewater, the self-water users' co-op.
Okay. After the water conveyance agreement was signed with the county, we've talked a bit about how are we gonna deal with the existing lines in the county that are currently served by the town, and so, Marion's been working with the water co-op, and him and I have been in discussions, he's also presented this to his council, but basically, it's to enter into a new agreement with Cardston County with regards to the self-water users' co-op. The information that's presented there in front of you is basically, right now, we have a meter at the county shop, and the individual properties are not metered, so we just bill on that. So we just bill on that meter at the county shop, and then they bill their residents a portion of that, for the people that are connected. So, the recommendation is that the co-op would install a meter on each of the residents' lines, that the town would continue to supply our water license for the current users. So right now, there's 10, I believe, that are signed. We have a letter that we sent to the county a couple of years ago that said we agreed, based on the original agreement, that there could be two more connections to that. One was for Steve Quentin, and the other one was for Gary Woodard. So, we've talked a little bit about the maximum use. In the original agreement, it, back in 1986, the environment around water use was much different than it is today. And that agreement was signed to allow for domestic use up to 300,000 gallons per user. That calculates out to 1,135 cubic meters per year, or 94.58 cubic meters per month, which is a substantial amount of water. So, that is still a bidding negotiations. Murray and I have talked about this, 36 cubic meters. The county council feels that perhaps we need to consider still supplying the same amount that we agreed to in 1986. I'm not sure I support that, like I said, because the environment is different now than it was in 1986. For domestic use, 95 cubic meters a month is a substantial amount of water. So, we will continue discussions there if that's councillor's wishes. The next item would be that any water over that amount, whatever's negotiated there, would come out of the county water license, so if they have any additional users, or there is anything above that, that it would have to be allocated through their licensing. Any new users must contact the county and make arrangements with them for connection, it would no longer be through the town. The county would provide the consumption volumes for all users to the town, so that we would have accurate records. And they would provide the consumption volumes for the current users as well, so not only who's on the line now, but the future users as well. The town would bill Cardston County for all of the water that's treated, and the rate would be determined at the start of each year, based on our, on our utility bylaw. And they would allow, of course, in their, the ability for a small profit margin. And that percentage would have to be determined as part of the agreement as well. Cardston County would pay the town and then invoice the Water Co-op for their consumption, so we would have one invoice, as we do now. The county would test the water for the co-op. Once a, once a line leaves the distribution system, there's a requirement for testing to ensure that the chlorine levels and all of that are still there. The co-op would be assigned to the distribution license that the county has, and an agreement would be signed between the town and the county to clarify all of it. The old water agreement that's between the town and the county for the self-water co-op will be superseded by the new agreement. So, we're looking for support in principle of these, of these parameters, and will continue to negotiate and bring a formal agreement back to councillor.
Okay, so, so Marion, we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's have a motion to recommend first.
Well, I will put a motion forward in principle to recommend a new MOU between the county and the town regarding the allocation of water to, so the co-op, the self-water user co-op, and not part of that motion, but I really think it's important that we bring ourselves to the 21st century regarding that notion of water conservation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you've got a motion to recommend from the council?
I think that should be part of the motion, though.
Okay, maybe, maybe you want to put it through the motion.
That the consumption needs to be addressed or something to that effect, so that we have that direction to take.
Okay, well, let's put it in the motion to...
You've got all ready?
Mr. Chairman, I am very curious if we have any information as to actual consumptions. Now, we probably don't have any way to get that information on a resident-by-resident basis, but I would be curious...
We have, we have records of what the annual, or what the monthly and annual use is, because we have one metered site, but I couldn't tell you what that is or individuals...
But we could break that down to get a, to get a mean or an average.
Well, yeah.
And I think that would be, I think that would be informative, plus, it's still a question as to how much treated water they're using for their livestock. And it all goes to the objective of this motion, to send a message that their consumption needs to be reduced, and if they exceed whatever is agreed to, then it's going to cost them. Because if we have to put similar limits on our users here in Cardston, and we have, then there's no reason why other users that are on our system, in spite of agreements that have been around for some time, that's got to change. And so that's at the heart of this motion.
Yeah. The only difficulty is that we're more urban, they're more rural, right? So, we have to kind of, kind of factor that in somewhere.
And I think there's a lesson to be learned as well, is when we're entering into agreements, we have to consider future implications, you know, to, to enter into an agreement that says we will allocate you X cubic meters at X rate, perhaps it's not...
The wise way to go.
Looking into the future as to the impact of that, yeah.
Okay, councillor.
If we're, excuse me, if we're going to get to the point where we're full cost recovery, can we make this a limited agreement, so when we make the adjustments to our rates, that that will be acceptable to them?
Well, I think the intent of the agreement councillor is that the rates would be based on our annual approval.
Yeah.
So as we amend rates, the agreement would coincide with those rates, yeah.
That's what's in the MOU right there.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table. Any more questions? Don't? Okay, all in favor of the motion to recommend? Okay, any opposed?
No.
Okay.
We need a motion to extend again.
Okay, motion to extend for 7:30?
Oh, for 7:30?
Yeah, we might drink it, we might make it.
Okay, 7:30, okay, all in favor? Okay, moving forward, Planning and Development, Municipal Development Plan Committee. We have members at large. What they're looking for is two members of councillor to sit on that board there.
Did you say you were going to appoint them?
The Municipal Development Plan Committee...
Yeah, it's been discussed at councillor, but no one's been appointed at this point, so we need two councillors to appoint.
So if anyone wants to, Mayor's, he's offering already?
I think Mayor had said he would appoint whoever...
It makes, it makes good sense that obviously, we need to choose among who's going to come back and be in the election process in September, October. And that might mean a change or two, but between now and then, there's only three that we have a good indication of seeking reelection.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I think this isn't a long-term committee, it's just kind of like an ad hoc committee, that will probably only be in place and have meetings at certain times along, along the line. So I mean, you know, maybe six months, you know, before that you can, you know, have what it is, development planning, so they look at the future of what Cardston should look like, that's what this group is kind of put forward to you. So I mean, within the next six months, I don't know if it can be accomplished in that period of time?
No, I don't, because we've got summer in there, which really puts a...
Some took them like nine months to do that.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask administration, what's your, what did we decide sort of as a result of our discussions about this at the retreat, I think is when we discussed it? Was councillor amenable to the mayor appointing those two members?
There was no decision made at that time. Everyone was willing to sit on the committee, but we have to limit that, because the decision was we would have more at-large members than councillor members. But I don't, I don't think it hurts at this point to appoint two councillors that would be willing to see it through to the end process. We don't necessarily need to change, even if you're not on councillor in the next term, as long as you're prepared to see it through to its completion as a committee member, which could be a year from now, right? By the time you go through public consultation process and stuff.
And then after the election, you know, they could always still come in, you know, and ask for another couple councillors, or some new councillors to sit on that committee as well, so.
But if I could, Mr. Chairman, in the event, let's say that the two are selected from this council and sit on the committee, and let's say that they don't get re-elected, or something happens, then we have five, plus two, plus two more, so now we've got a nine-member committee. So in any event, in any event, I would like to move that councillors Conan and Edmonds be appointed to that committee, and I could add to that, subject to outcome of the October election, if councillor feels that's the way you want to word that motion.
I would recommend the two that are appointed carry on to the completion of the committee.
If there's an extra two on there, it doesn't, it's not a big deal. I mean, I, I mean, if you've attended a lot of committee meetings and things like that, probably everybody shows up anyhow, so maybe we'd get lucky to have seven on there.
But you know, and you know what? And I probably won't be sitting at this table after the 22nd of October, anyway. But anyway, my motion is to recommend to councillor that councillors Conan and Edmonds be appointed.
Are they amenable to that, or is he okay with that then?
Yep.
Let their names be cared for. Okay, so, motion to recommend for councillor Cronin, councillor Edmonds to sit on the ad hoc committee of municipal develop, or sorry, Municipal Development Plan Committee there. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under other, 8A, disaster funding. Marion, did you want to just quickly?
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick update. Just for councillor's information, we have received a portion of our disaster funding, but none on the golf course. They withheld all of the funding for the golf course. Ernie Intend, who is the engineer for the funding office, intends to be here the week of May 27th to do his onsite review, and at that time, his decision will be rendered. I have spoken with Dean Summerfelt, and we understand that everything's okay until the funding is received on the golf course. The total outstanding amount right now is about $77,000. So the town is, you know, still about $50-some thousand dollars, but is not associated with the golf course management corps, management groups in both, so we're, I just wanted to let you know that we did receive the balance of the money.
So you received $50,000, is that, no?
No, we received $150,000.
Okay, all right, okay, I understand what you're saying.
But there's still $77,000 outstanding.
Of which $50,000...
Would be the town's cost that we incurred.
Right.
Yeah.
So that still is quite a better difference.
Yes, yeah. So, we're working with them, and Dean understands and was comfortable making that recommendation to his Ford or his group, that everything just kind of wait until we can kind of do a bit of a check exchange.
Marion, can I just ask you, is Dean the person with whom you deal now out of that group, management group? Is he the one who is now the voice for the group?
Um, I, yes, I...
For financial matter, for financial matter anyways?
Dean and Randy were, were kind of the spokespeople.
Okay.
Dean is the one that seems to be the easiest to get a hold of, and so I communicate with him on a regular basis. You know, I still CC Randy on any emails and all of that as well, but, but Dean is the one that I talk to most frequently, just because he is the easiest to get a hold of.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Marion. Okay, down to Correspondence, item nine there, AUMA. We'll kind of quickly run through these things, they're requesting resolutions from municipalities. So if anyone has any resolution, I'd want to put forward to deadlines, June 30th, 2013. Next is Blood Tribe Economic Development.
It's an invitation.
Development invitation, yeah, and that's...
At that, I think.
That's a public meeting in open host, which is Wednesday, May 15th, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. in Scandals.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I will be asking councillor a week from today, that's the eve of this meeting. If you don't know already, but can, want to have an idea who's going to go?
I think I would like to go.
I think I'll, I don't know whether I want to stay for four hours or five minutes.
Marion asked a question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just don't think that this is something that needs to be on a second agenda, so if the decision could be made tonight, it'd be great, rather than having to put it on another agenda. But it is just a drop-in, it's not something that you're expected to stay for four or five hours?
I think, personally, I would like to go, because we have not had a formal meeting with that new councillor, and I think to create, carry on creating the bridging, I think it would be a nice, nice thing to come to know them, essentially for that purpose. There we go.
Okay, so councillor Cronin, anybody else want to?
I'd like to go.
I mean, I might not stay the whole time.
The mayor's planning to go, and councillor Creed?
I, I think I could go. I just, I'm just trying to clarify, this isn't something that came out before, that they only invited a couple of people to visit, this is a different event?
This is open house, and it, excuse me, it was mentioned at the meeting last week...
That was the one that you...
And at that meeting, councillors Edmonds, Conan, myself were there. But it's not limited, it is not limited.
I'll probably go, I think.
I hope, you know, not that protocol is a big issue, but I would really, really hope that a handful of their councillors will be there. I'm guessing they will, I hope they will be there.
This is just a drop-in, basically, because you don't have to be there the whole time, just you can pop in sometime and...
You know, if you look at the bottom of the, of that pamphlet, what it says, it says, "Meet the councillor on the Economic Pillar Committee and Department and Entity Staff." In other words, you have a chance, there are about four of them assigned, I think, to that, to that committee, and I think that's an interesting thing for us to know a little bit what's going on with them, because there's a lot going on on the Blood Tribe, I guess, right now.
Okay, so moving along there. C, anyone that wants to go to the premier's prayer breakfast as well, and I do so. D, the Alzheimer's Society is having a walk. That's going to be, is it, it's going to start at the Lions Park, June 22nd, 10 o'clock, they're looking for someone from councillor to go and give a two-minute speech.
I think that would be a wonderful thing for the FCS representative.
Anybody you want to walk to for that?
FCS representative.
I might forget them.
I'm like... Does anyone want to put their name for it for...
22nd of June, what time?
Uh, was it there, 10 o'clock AM?
Which day is that, I don't know.
Since it's Saturday.
Uh, which...
Well, we've got a week or two to think about this, to see who's got a free schedule.
You know.
Yeah, and I might.
I'll probably forget, so. Okay, let's go on to Conservative Party and Long Island with the Conservatives.
All yells.
Okay, and 9F, Alberta Government. It's a program that they've created for people over 65 years of age, where they can defer their property tax payment.
Take it off their house price when they sell their house.
Take it off the house when they sell.
Well, you know, it's a program that exists in BC for, has existed in BC for a long time, and a lot of people take advantage of it. It allows them to not worry about their taxes and their estate worry about it. Is that it?
Don't give anything to the kids.
Just move to adjourn.
Did you want to speak? Did you want to speak to Gordon?
Oh, sorry, yes, we may need to.
Did you want, or no? Do you want to do that another?
Um.
You can do that another.
Well, I think that that needs a little bit of further discussion.
Yeah, I think so.
Just a couple of things, I guess, in response is we do have a development agreement with Gordon, which outlines responsibilities and that was done as part of the subdivision process. And we also have a sale agreement that was very specific about who would be responsible for what. One of the concerns I have administratively, and Counselor Cronin alluded to this earlier, is we are at a cost recovery with our electrical system, but that took some time to get there and it took some effort on behalf of council to recognize the true cost of operating that utility. For us to implement a, an investment component with that is a little different, I think, than Florida Seratco that has a larger customer base. We have fifteen hundred customers approximately on our electrical utility and to divide that out amongst that many customers, because it would have to be included in rate structure, it could have a significant impact. So that's something that council may want to consider. The other thing is with the looping, there is some background information there. I apologize, we didn't have this ahead of time, but as Gordon said, his sister passed away, so he was away. And, but there's some background information there as well from Albert Taggo, who's with Associated Engineering and in regards to why we would like to see them leave that system, because there is a risk that's associated with that. Now, maybe we can mitigate that risk and if council wants us to look at that negotiation with Gordon. He did say that perhaps they could provide the staffing for the flushing if that was required. I don't know what the implications of that are, whether it has to be certified people or not, so we would have to look into that. But we'll put it back on the agenda for Tuesday, but those are just some things I want council to think about and review Albert's comments there as well. And we'll try and bring some details about the development agreement and what was agreed to way back when. I apologize, I won't be here Tuesday. Come away to conference. So Jeff will handle that on my behalf, so I'm sure he's fully capable of doing it.
Sorry. Mary?
Thank you.
Thank you. See how power goes to its head that fast?
I know, just like.
You know, it's dangerous. Do you see how much time it took?
Like this was, I was supposed to be out of here by six.